As you can be. This Livingston City Commission meeting is called to order, roll call please.
Chair Noots.
Here.
Vice Chair Cale.
Here.
Commissioner Friedman. Commissioner Schwartz.
President.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
First up on the agenda is general public comment. So this is for items that are not on the agenda. Individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has jurisdiction, supervision, or advisory power. If there's anybody in the room that wants to give comment, could you please just start with your name and address? Hi, Leslie.
How do you do? Okay, Leslie, if I go Chamber of Commerce, three of three West Park Street. Actually, I'm pretty sure today, the exhibit that we had brought in, oh my golly, one day we had eighty-two children. So just about every child at the grammar school piled in. So that was fun. We've had the high school. We've had folks coming from as far as. Zulit to come see the exhibit. We are trying to raise the funds. I might come match it the next meeting for, to help us mail it, but the exhibit visit is going very well. Also, we have seen a major increase at the visitor center, which, as you know, is unfunded. So the visitor center, today I had sixty-eight people. I had seven from France, and that was a fun conversation. They're lovely people. And I, what I do continuously hear, what we've heard year after year, I had spoken to the city manager, Mr. Gaeger, about the signs. So we have new signs on the front of the visitor center. We have one right there on the main street with a grant program. We were able to order our signs. We do have four more signs to put up. So we wanted, originally this community had a welcome to Livingston sign out by the hospital. When they redid the bridge, it was just knocked down. It had gold leaf and everything. It was just a beautiful sign. We'd like to get another one put up at that side of town, pretty much across the street from where the coffee crossing, RX Coffee is, excuse me. And then the other one, I have a picture of it, is pretty much right across the street, right next to where Radio Shack is, and then the grass starts. So I have a kind of a picture of it. I've also downloaded all the documents that I need from MDT on this particular one, but these are what the signs are. So one sign is visitor center, and the other one is thanks for visiting. Visitor Center is just ahead. So we figured that this would be a great way to match up, is to come in from both ends of town, get them to the visitor center, get them the information they need, and find the campgrounds that they're all scrambling for right now without reservations. So, and you know, how to not go pet the bison and get gored. So I'm going to be, I will be filing an official presentation again with Mr. Gaeger. I know that I gave it to him right before his budget process, so it kind of probably got lost in the paperwork there, but I'm hoping that the commission will see its way to have these beautiful signs put up in our community and appreciate the hundred fifteen years our visitor center has been helping people come to our community.
So thank you. And your information was not lost in the budget process. I'll ask Mr. Giger when he does the budget. I don't want the agenda to maybe address that. Thanks. Is there anyone else here that would like to give general public comment?
Hi, Jane Jarrett, live in Lewis, and I wanted to comment on the Community Wellness Center project.
Great. We're going to be talking about that later in the agenda, and so.
And that's what you said I could do.
Yep. So items not on the agenda, you can give comment now. And then when we get to that item, I'll make a call for public comment, and then everybody that wants to give comments on the location for the wellness center will be able to talk.
Well, not just the location, but the project itself. I'm against a project.
I'll invite you to speak when we get to that.
Okay, and is that going to be today or some other time?
Today. Yes, thank you, Jane.
You're welcome to give public comment.
Yes, thank you. No, thank you. Can you please start with your name and, oh, we need a writing pencil. Is there anything else you wanted to share?
Yeah. Wow, I know, block, that block thirty, and yet, point, I'll show you. It went up six, six hundred seventy-seven percent. While down, block thirty-four, it went up one thousand sixty-two percent. While also down, slot that straddles the ditch, there's a four-point placement in that property that's seventy-five feet wide. It went up one thousand three hundred twenty-nine percent. One block thirty-three, there is the eighth street, towards Burchley, the big block, the county in two thousand eight, nine, somewhere in there. The portion that was abandoned is on the west path, which benefited what first? There's nine lots, and it was about seventy-five hundred square feet. The thing, give, that street is not going to be developed like, is like this, the same street, yes sir. I wish that it would be a cross, because this goes back two years, you know? I've been trying to get something done. I had a meeting with Grant in early June, then the third, the fifth, were, we did, didn't, they were, the long. Anyway, my wife, David, when the trap. Anything else you got?
Yeah, did you, can you repeat your name, please?
Walter Neat.
Walter Neat, thank you. And have you had a chance to meet with?
Twice.
Twice, okay. I'll look forward to, I'll connect with Mr. Gaeger outside of a commission meeting and get up to speed on the issue and, and see what I can learn from the city.
I would offer item eight A on tonight's agenda will address part of the concern.
So eight A is, I don't know if there's copies of the agenda. It's an ordinance addressing street maintenance and street lighting districts. So perhaps a follow-up meeting after meeting might be in order, so he could see the changes and assessments to his property. Does that work for you?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, are you open to a follow-up meeting with Mr. Gaeger? Because we're going to be working on addressing.
Get the bin, the long time, I couldn't die.
Well, I'm glad you didn't.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you mind passing this over? Tim, I'm happy we can sit down. I'd like to get up to speed on it, and then after the meeting, I can talk. Thank you for coming and sharing your concerns with us. And you're not alone. You're not the only person that has these issues. So thanks for your diligence.
From twenty-one, then twenty-two, then even the market, that way.
Yep.
They've got, wait up, no?
Yep. Yep, thank you.
I think, five, the good, thank you.
Thank you, Walter. And you have this contact information. Absolutely, great, great. So is there anyone else that wants to give general public comment tonight in the room?
Could you speak up? I can hardly hear you back here.
Sure. Did we, do you know if the speakers are addressed to? Did I get a chance?
I believe that one is maxed out.
Okay. Jane, thank you for letting me know. Is this a little bit better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here that wants to give general public comment in the room? Otherwise, I'm going to go online. I don't see anyone, so I'm going to look online. Is there anybody online that wants to give general public comment? I don't see anybody in the room or online, so the general public comment portion is closed, and now we're going to move into consent items. So we have A through H this evening. Commissioners, is there any that folks want called for discussion, or can I have a motion on consent items A through H?
I'm making a motion to approve consent items A through H.
Second, motion by Schwartz, and a second by Cale. Roll call, please.
Chair Noots.
Or.
Vice Chair Cale.
Or.
Commissioner Friedman.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or Commissioner Lyons.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next up is proclamation. We have two tonight. The first proclamation is a proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, declaring August first to be National Night Out in the City of Livingston. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a national community building campaign on Tuesday, August first, two thousand twenty-three, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the National Night Out Campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in your city to join over thirty-eight million neighbors across sixteen thousand communities from all fifty states, US territories, and military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes strong police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live and work. And whereas neighbors in your city assist the local law enforcement agency through joint community building efforts and support National Night Out in two thousand twenty-three. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors of your city come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. And now therefore, I, Melissa Noots, on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, do hereby call upon all of our residents to join us in support of the Livingston Police Department, the Park County Sheriff's Office, Livingston Fire and Rescue, and Park County Road Fire District in the town of Clyde Park during the National Night Out festivities on Tuesday, August first, two thousand twenty-three. Further, let it be resolved that I, Melissa Noots, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August first, two thousand twenty-three, as National Night Out in the City of Livingston. Mr. Gaeger.
Thank you, Chair Noots. Unfortunately, on Tuesday, August first, I cannot go out because I have a city commission meeting, so.
Are there going to be any festivities that we should know about other than the city commission meeting?
Yeah, because people have been asking me if there was a centralized thing, and people want to actually contribute to it, so.
Fantastic. I will work with our city staff and the appropriate departments to get the word out about what the, the actual festivities are for the night.
Awesome.
Thank you. And thanks for sharing that, Commissioner Schwartz, also. And thanks, our local representative in the room, Johnson, prior. All right, next, next proclamation is declaring July as Parks and Recreation Month in Livingston. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Livingston. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being. What? Okay. Whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation professionals provide programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes all our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the US House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And now therefore, it be resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I, Melissa Noots, chair, do hereby proclaim the month July to be Parks and Recreation Month in Livingston, Montana. Further, I urge the city to celebrate all the dedicated park and recreation professionals who help build strong, vibrant, and resilient communities through the power of parks and recreation. Mr. Gaeger.
Thank you, Chair Noots. I join you in celebrating all of our dedicated employees in the Parks and Recreation Departments and divisions. So thank you all. You're too busy to be here tonight, except for a few of you over there. There you go, all right.
Commissioners, did you want to add anything? Oh, I see our rec director over here. Thank you.
Great job, as usual.
And I think the Parks foreman is probably out in the parks, not here, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Or he's, yeah, yeah, he's taking care of his family. Okay, well, thank you. Now we're going to move into ordinances. Thank you. All right, so we have one ordinance tonight. Ordinance three zero four two. An ordinance of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending Chapter twenty-six, Article five, Sections twenty-six point nine zero and twenty-six point nine one of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Street Maintenance and Street Lighting Districts. Mr. Gaeger.
Thank you, Chair Noots. The item before you is the first reading of the ordinance, and this ordinance seeks to modify the method by which the cost of the city's street maintenance and street lighting districts are assessed against properties. Currently, the city assesses such costs based on the size of a parcel with certain limitations to per maximum assessment amounts. You may recall from our conversation in December, that improved properties in the City of Livingston, the assessment is capped at one acre. Whereas the unimproved properties were previously capped at five acres, although we adjusted that in December. And the, basically, the current assessing, assessment method leads to some inefficiencies. A little bit like we discussed here earlier this evening, where certain large parcels that may be inaccessible from the current street network and don't benefit from street lighting have, have larger assessments than, than some parcels that are even located in the downtown core here, for instance. And in some cases are significantly larger assessments. And so the recommendation from staff is to move the street maintenance and street lighting district assessment methodology from land area, or excuse me, from parcel size to parcel valuation. The Montana Code annotated allows several different methodologies, including parcel size, street frontage, taxable value, trip generation, or, or simply just a, an equal spreading of, of the costs. And so staff has, has reviewed the different methodologies. There are some that are perhaps more difficult to work with and, and would require relatively frequent update. We are at a staff level recommending the city move to taxable value for a few reasons. One, it is, it, it's an assessment method that is updated centrally by the state every two years. And secondarily, it would more closely align the, the burden of costs with our other general fund funded services. As you know, as we all know, from our recent property tax assessments, you know, the general fund is assessed based on valuation of a parcel. And so moving to the street maintenance and street lighting would align, align those two cost assignment methodologies. So apologize, I will stand for any questions that you may have. And we've also got our, our finance director, Gage Betterhoff, as well.
Do you all have clarifying questions?
I guess, you know, somebody like Mr. Need's situation, if, if we approve this tonight, or subsequently upon adoption of this, how soon would we be able to calculate that and assess that? You know, you know, given my property, how much am I going to pay? What's, I guess, what's the formulation, you know? I'm assessed at, let's say, five hundred thousand dollars.
So this would go into effect for fiscal year twenty-four, so the tax notices go out in October, and they would be on the October notices would have the new assessment methodology.
Okay, and what would that percentage be? Do you know, or?
As far as, so the, the, the impact really, it, it varies by property. There are some parcels that, similar to what we heard this evening, that are inaccessible. And, and some that are also potentially less buildable due to their terrain and just the specifics of the property. And so those parcels actually have a very low valuation when we look at the state, state book. Whereas there are others that, that are smaller, that are more centrally located, that have a, a much higher valuation. So we will have, have some property swings, I can say at a staff level. We, we spend some time just, you know, picking members of the commission, staff members, to see how it would impact folks.
Right.
And, and for, for a free number of parcels, significantly more than the parcels in town, I would say the swing is, is less than a hundred dollars in the, the difference of the, the prior method versus the current method.
Right.
But there are some parcels that, that do have larger.
Right. So. Yeah, I'm just, I guess I'm just looking at equity, especially with unbuildable lots and stuff, you know, I know. Dealing with this for quite some time, what a huge task. Something that essentially at this time would be a little, stuff like that, so. I'm glad to see this, coming to this matter seems a little more straightforward and a little more equitable, yeah.
So it sounds like too, maybe what you're asking is, is there a way that somebody could come in and get like a rough idea, knowing that the state has to assess the valuation and that might, they might not have the numbers for their property yet. However, is there a way they could go from what they have currently, what the state values their property, and compare the old method to the proposed method, and get some, get some numbers from the staff person?
Yes, we actually are, as we all know, the evaluation numbers recently came out, and so we have been working with the state to, to get the file of what the valuations are, and we hope that we had that file on Friday, but it wasn't a difficult file to work with. So we're unable to present those exact figures today, but we're.
Well, I was just wondering if there's a percentage. If I have a five hundred thousand dollar assessed house, how much am I going to be paying? How do I figure that? Where do I have to go to staff?
Yeah, well, it sounds like maybe.
We don't.
The information will be coming, and there'll be somebody on the, somebody at the staff level that can help individual community members. I see a department head raising her hand, so I'll take that as a yes, but I can't direct people to her, but you sure can, so.
Please swing by City Hall if anyone has.
Okay, thank you. Great question.
Thanks, that's it.
Other commissioners, clarifying questions?
Um, since I'm looking at the old assessment cost, and it looks like we had, potentially, there was a there was a note in here, it looks like about a specific subdivision, so that's going to go away, whatever deal or not deal, I don't know if it was steel or not, a situation that we had with them is going away, and everything is just going to be flat across the board based on taxable valuations of the lot.
Other commissioners, anything? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion on ordinance number three zero four two.
I'll make motion to approve the first reading of ordinance thirty forty-two authorized the conduct of a final public hearing before its adoption.
Motion by Schwartz, and a second by Lyons. Now it's time for public comment on ordinance three zero four two. Let's start with people in the room. Come on up, please. If you wouldn't mind starting with your name and your address.
Sure, I can sign in too.
Yes, please, thank you.
Anyway, I want to say I'm in for, for this because.
And you're Todd.
Todd Quizzle, yeah. And because under the present system, if you own an acre in, say, Montagues addition, you know, just got annexed, you're going to pay about sixteen hundred dollars for the street lights, but if you're in Mule Haven, you pay less than six hundred, and because they got a special deal. But also, you've got, I looked up like Town and Country, you know, several acre facility, ten million dollar thing, they pay nine hundred for streets. Albertine's pays fifteen hundred. So a lot of revenue is going to be made up because you've got Murdoch, you got Yellowstone Gateway, and you've got all these three-story condominiums being built, which have very little square footage for residents because they're three-story and they pay very little, but they still have a value of, say, three hundred thousand. But it is a lot fairer way to do this, that route you're going. And the thing is, the, the, the state does the assessing, so that's off your shoulders. The state assesses the property. So if somebody wants to complain about their assessment, they got to go to deal with the state and their appeals board. So anyway, I just want to let you know I'm in favor, because I was caught up in it too, and like I said, I was paying twenty-four hundred for two kind of marginal properties in the city, and by proposed value, I'll be a lot lower, so it benefits me. So anyway, thank you.
Thanks for your comments on. Are there other people in the room that want to give comment on this? I'm going to look online now. Is there anybody, anybody online that wants to give comment on ordinance three zero four two? I don't see anyone. Last call. Right, public comment is closed for ordinance three zero four two. Commissioners, any comments?
I'm just, Mr. Gaeger, there's a couple of typos in here on one of five of, or fifty-two of the agenda, year of twenty-nine ninety-four. And then on page fifty-five, February twenty-twenty-three, which I'm sure is not a date long. And then on page 55, February 2023, which I'm sure is not the date we want. Five.
The date passed, yeah, so date of whatever the final reading is. It'll be whatever, so what's the month of final adoption, probably August. Well, that's a very good flag, that would be an unfortunate error. Other commissioner comments?
I appreciated hearing kind of the examples of the big businesses in town and thinking about they impact the street network. Obviously, I go there. And I I read, I saw in the Montana code that that trip generation is a possible way to assess these fees, which I think would probably be the most equitable way, but I the the process of assessing that sounds very challenging and probably beyond the capability of you know, in-house staff at the moment. But but is maybe a more equitable way that if if we if we try this and we find more kind of inefficiencies, I might recommend we consider how that could be done efficiently in-house or or however. But I also appreciate the point of the fact that relating it to to state assessments is based on a a state adopted methodology that's like much more easily accessible. And is, you know, kind of justified by the decision makers a step above us, so.
Thanks. Other commissioners? All right, I don't have anything to add. I agree with what everyone else has already said. I think it'll be good to see it'll be good to see this more equitable update that's actually within the realm of what the capacity of the current staff. We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Lyons. No other comments, roll call please.
Chair News.
For.
Vice Chair Kail.
For.
Commissioner Friedman. Yeah. Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. All right, next on the agenda, we have a few, I think we have three resolutions. Resolution 5094, calling for a public hearing on the FY 2024 city managers recommended budget.
Thank you, Chair News. This item is in follow-up to our somewhat lengthy discussion in the last meeting related to the recommended budget and without going through the presentation one more time for everyone in the room, I will say that staff has heard the commission comments and requests to modify the the budget, and so we have added $20,000 for the creation of an energy action plan and $15,000 for the the conduct of of elections based on the the prior discussion. And so those are the only two changes from the recommended budget that was published in early meeting. And so I would stand for any questions you may have on the additions or any part of the underlying budget as well.
Mr. Lyons?
Would you please walk us through the process for August? So we we went through, you presented the budget to us back in June, and then we're deciding to have call a public hearing in August. Could you kind of like explain that process and you know, why we're not making a decision on it tonight, just for everybody's benefit? Including my own. Absolutely. So the Montana code annotated establishes a process for adopting a budget, and the the last meeting that we had where we went over the the budget was actually not required by state code was a little bit extraneous. And so tonight's meeting, calling for the the resolution of intent to adopt the budget is the first formal step. And then we will notice this, and in the second meeting of August, which is slated for August 15, we will read the 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 final resolution and adopt the budget at that time, if it is the will of the commission. Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other clarifying questions? I think I have. Two. So the first one is because I'm sure people are interested to know, the additions that the commission made, is it taking money away from any monies that were currently or presently allocated in the recommended budget that came from you?
No, we have simply added those two items on top of the recommended budget.
Thanks. And then my second clarifying question was in regards to Leslie and what she brought up in general public comment. Because I believe her request was part of the budget process. And so are you able to clarify that?
Yes, I can say that we did receive the the chambers' requests. There were actually several requests that were received by the chamber that we, as a group, discussed in a work session in early April. And for for various reasons, those items were not included in the manager's recommended budget.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's it for clarifying questions for me. So now I'm looking for a motion on resolution 5094, but when you make the motion, actually just omit the part that says and city manager, because he actually does not sign this resolution. So we don't need to make a motion, ask him to sign it, because there's no line for him to sign. So, sorry. That's okay, I'm sure it's a, I'm sure it's habit, no big deal.
I'll move to approve resolution number 5094 and authorize the chair to sign resolution 5094.
Motion by Lyons and a second by Schwartz, and now we'll open it to public comment on resolution. This is calling for the public hearing, resolution 5094. We'll start with folks in the room. Anybody in the room? I'll look online now. Is there anybody online that wants to give comment on resolution 5094? I don't see anymore. Public comment for resolution 5094 is closed. Commissioners? Comments? Mr. Schwartz?
Thank you to city manager. Finance director, job well done. Seems like the process gets easier and easier as we go on, and I, to me, I certainly appreciate it, so job well done.
Others?
I want to say I appreciate the process, the budget process. This season, it was I thought it was really straightforward, felt like I learned a lot in the process and and understand things better, so thank you for that, for that new process.
I would just chime in with my fellow commissioners, we say this is the best process and the most accessible budget, so thanks to both of you for your hard work on it. I think it's going to be really great to see the final version. I know you made it so you can swap pages in and out. And I'm really looking forward to seeing the final version, and I am looking forward to the fact that it's so accessible that anybody in the community can pick it up and look at whatever department they're interested in, and the changes are right there front and center. It's going to be so easy for folks to see their priorities, the community priorities showing up in the budget, and I really like that. So thank you for your work on it. All right, we're ready to vote. We have a motion by Schwartz in a sec, no, I'm sorry, we have a motion by Lyons and a second by Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Chair News.
For.
Vice Chair Kail.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is resolution 5095. Resolution of intent to increase water rates. Mr. Gager?
Thank you, Chair News. The item before you is a item to the last one, and included in the presentation last week was a brief discussion on the water rates and similar to the adoption of the budget in order to increase rates above a certain level, we need to read a resolution and twice and conduct a public hearing. And so for the the water rates conversation, resolution 5095 is that vehicle, and I am happy to just run through very quickly with you folks here. We discussed it a little bit last time, but the 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 tiered water rate system that that we are recommending would result in different increases across the tiers. And so we are recommending for folks that use the the lowest tier, we are recommending a 3% increase, and then we are recommending a 5% increase for the lowest tier is from one gallon to 10,000 gallons of usage. The next tier from 10,001 to 30,000, we're recommending a 5% increase. The the tier after that, from 30,001 gallons to 70,000 gallons, we're recommending a 7% increase. And for the highest tier above 70,000 gallons of of monthly usage, we are recommending a 10% increase in the the usage fee. And so to kind of put that in context here, the lowest tier, those folks that use less than 10,000 gallons, that covers approximately 83.8% of our users on a monthly basis. And those those 83% of our users consume approximately 59.57% of of our comprised 59.57% of our revenue, which, because we currently have a flat system, they also are that same percentage of our usage. And so those, the the median bill of a a household or a property in that tier would be likely to see a a monthly increase of about 83 cents per per month under the new the the new system. The switching gears to the highest tier, those folks that are using greater than 70,000 gallons per month, it it is a very small number of our users, less than 1%. However, those 1% of our users currently use approximately 13.5% of of the water within the city. And so under the the new system, the the median bill in that tier currently is about 468, almost $469, and and so those folks would see a a monthly increase of of about $49 under the new proposed tiered system. So I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Commissioners? Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Gager, do you have a sense of what some common uses are that account for those higher level of water consumption? Yeah, absolutely. Typically, more more fixtures equals more water usage, and so it 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 ends up being those those structures like hotels and some of the others that have just more fixtures and more use. Some of the other high-use customers typically are are industrial customers that use them in their processes. Are there any high-water-consuming agricultural users within our system? There are few, as a a lot of our agricultural users have agricultural wells or other systems like that.
Other clarifying questions? All right, so I am looking for a motion. Again, you don't need to direct the city manager to sign a resolution, but I'm looking for a motion on resolution 5095.
I move to approve resolution number 5095 and authorize the chair to sign resolution 5095.
One second.
A motion by Kail and a second by Lyons. And now I'm going to open it to public comment for folks in the room on resolution 5095.
I've already signed it. Leslie Feigl, Livingstonary Chamber of Commerce. So last year, I came in front of the commission this time that you also wanted to do an increase, and it was right after the flood, and I know that I spoke to you all about how difficult just any of the small changes would be, not knowing at that time that we were going to plunge into this huge deficit across our nation that we're facing and the struggles for businesses and homeowners alike, the additional bills that they have to pay even at the grocery store. So here we are facing another increase here. And I know that just five restaurants alone, the difference that it's made in their bills just by, just by the conversations we've had, and thank gosh, you know, a few of them are doing really well this particular summer. But you know, when I'm looking at your 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 budgets that we have here from the last couple of years on the, you know, income, so the budgeted revenues, the balance of funds for just water alone at $1.5 million and change, and this next year you have $1.9 million projected ending fund balance of 2.4 million, 700 and something and change. Why, if we have this much that is sitting there, the only thing that could be stated on here, the reason why you're doing an increase is for basically in case something comes up, doesn't matter how it was stated in here for employees, so sorry, didn't have the page open here. Capital cluster increase in your rate that's making it difficult to fund the replacement of aging infrastructure and operating costs continue to rise. The additionally, the cost of providing staff, operating cost, capital cost. So there's quite a bit of money that's sitting there under the sewer and water accounts already, and now we're looking at doing another annual increase, and that's quite large. I mean, 10%, 5%, 3%? Any of that, I don't know why we can't give our community a break for one year, just, I mean, like literally one year. If you have that much in your funding account, and that's, that's what we're looking at for the budget. I mean, this community really does need a break, especially after hitting them with a large increase last year after the flooding, when businesses really struggled and community members have struggled throughout this whole year. So I'm asking the commission at this time, please just think about the community, give them a break for one year. You just passed another alighting, a street maintenance increase, they're going to have a tax increase coming. You know, the these increases at some point have to stop for our community and just give the community a break. We're we're moving at a huge pace, we're building at a growth of like incredible rate, and we can't become a high-end community yet. You know, the community's not ready for it. There's a lot of people here, 32% of this community senior, you know, they need a break too. So until we get kind of some of this housing all straightened out, just think about giving a break for just this once. So thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Leslie. Are there other folks in the room that want to give comment on resolution 5095? Look online, is there anyone online that wants to give comment on resolution 5095? I don't see anyone. Call a comment for resolution 5095 is closed. Do you mind if I start with addressing? Okay. So I guess I have two questions. One, so Leslie was saying that we just voted on an increase for street and light assessments. I don't believe that that's I think there might be one word off in that statement, so I was hoping you could clarify that. And then if you could also clarify, like, when we talk about ending fund balances, what are we thinking about as a city with those numbers? I mean, is that just money in the bank that's hanging out that we're making interest on, or is it like accounted for something? Could you like shed some light on that? In addition to That I get like this concept of operating cost, capital costs. Increasing for the city and how we cover the increases, those three things, not two, my mistake.
Thank you, Chair Nudes, if I may. You are correct in in believing that an increase to the street maintenance and street lighting assessments is not what the last action item was. The last item was to change the method by which those costs are assessed on properties. I'm happy to report that my recommended budget did not include any increase to the street maintenance or street lighting assessment amounts. So while the assessment methodology may change, the overall assessment amount, the revenue that the city is expecting to receive is unchanged in fiscal twenty four from fiscal twenty three.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Absolutely, with with regard to to the operating costs of of the system. Certainly, staff salary and benefits are are one component of that, however, I would offer that. And and it's the same really on on the water as on the sewer side that we'll we'll deal with shortly. The the cost of chemicals that we use to to treat, whether it's the drinking water or the wastewater. The cost of pumps and 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 other machinery really have increased quite dramatically in the last several years as as a lot of other costs. And so the the increase, we believe is is rather modest. Again, eighty three cents for for approximately eighty four percent users is the the expected monthly impact. And so we have been really prudent as we've structured this increase. We are hopeful that through this this tiered system, we can induce a little bit of conservation into the system. Which should help to to lower some of our operating costs long term, if if less water is flowing through the system, it's less for us to treat and pump and and all that. So hopefully there will be some some cost savings through this this mechanism. And then with regard to to fund balances, and and I will focus on the enterprise funds because that is that is where we are now. Many community members may know that we had a a downtown capital improvement project that was slated for this summer in the alley between. Between Maine and Second and and several other places in town as well. And you know, unfortunately, the bids that were received. Exceeded our budgetary ability to fund the project. And so while it may seem on paper that two point four million dollar fund balance in the water fund or one point four in sewer fund. Is a lot of of money, the the projects to upgrade the system are very complex and very costly. And 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 as I said, we had an engineer's estimate, the the bid went over that, the current year's project. And we were unable to fund the project because the fund balance was not sufficient to fund the project and maintain. An adequate cushion for any operational hiccups that may occur. And so quite honestly, as we look at at these increases in water and sewer. We do so recognizing that it is very unlikely to allow us to fund that project next year as well. Based on the the bids that were received this year and so. We as a city are working within our means and certainly are very sensitive to the impact on taxpayers and and users of the system. But I I certainly appreciate that that it is a tough tough economic time for all of us and we're trying to be respectful of that.
For clarifying on those. Commissioners, do you have any comments?
Where do I start, um, I know Director Public Works has stated in passing in our life, his lifetime and mine. Will never be caught up with the replacement of our water lines and stuff like that, woefully way behind. And this is. This applies around the country as well. I'd rather take small hits as we go along, I expect to increase, you know, personally every year. But I think that's the only way we can, we're not getting, I want to say we're getting ahead of the. Ahead of, you know, the repairs and stuff, but we're not as, you know, with the alley work that needs to be done downtown, the final phase of that. And we can't do that this year and it sounds like we're not going to be able to do it next year. And I use that alley for loads of, I mean, wheels on wheels and stuff. And to load up in there in the winter, it's it's something else, but more importantly, it's what's underneath that really, really needs to be replaced. So I'm, you know, from a personal standpoint, I'd rather. Pay that eighty dollar more a month. As we go along and just try and stay on track as best we can to replace our aging infrastructure. Thank you, IU.
Thank you, Commissioner Short, Commissioner Lyons.
I'll just add on to Commissioner Short's comments. You know, I'm thinking a few things, first, I I trust the. The assessment from staff of the need for improving and and repairing and updating our infrastructure. I'm not an expert on that stuff and we have, we employ experts on that stuff and they're telling us what they need and I trust those requests. I don't see any, you know, personal gain to staff or to to anyone within the city of of increasing these fees. In fact, it hurts us on the commission politically to make that vote every year. Like it's not fun emotionally or politically to make that vote every year, but I see that there's really two options. We can avoid increasing those fees and let our infrastructure fall into disrepair. And then try and catch up when we see a major problem or we can try our best to keep up with it. And part of the process of keeping up with it is also keeping up with with the fees that we assess. It's not fun, this will be my second vote to increase these fees and that's like, that's not fun. And it it hurts me, it hurts my constituents and it hurt like it's just a difficult vote. But again, I see this as really two, we have two options, it's to let it fall into disrepair and try and catch up when there are major problems. Or try and keep up with it and I see this vote as an attempt to keep up with it.
Thank you, other commissioners?
I'll just agree with my fellow commissioners and just say, I would rather pay a little bit now and have all of us pay a little bit now than ten years down the road. Some poor group of citizens is going to have to pony up a whole bunch of money to fix something that goes wrong. And we know that our wastewater pipes are leaking and, you know, like we have leakage, we have water that's seeping in places that it shouldn't be. We also have to prepare as as our population grows to manage all of our stormwater. And that's coming pretty quickly at ten thousand and we have to manage all of our stormwater and we're not ready for that. So if we can't keep on top of what we have now and prepare for what we're going to have to in the future, we're really going to be in trouble. And in some of those instances and on top of just having to pay to fix the thing, we will get charged by the state. For for not doing the right thing and that costs us even more money. So these are things that we do have to do, I agree with Commissioner Lyons, it's not fun and. But it has to be done.
Is there anything you want to add?
Yeah, I could agree with that, that's good, quick thinking.
All all, I agree with everything everyone said, the one thing that I'll add is I do like the tiered system this year. I I appreciate that the majority of people on Livingston are not the majority of the water usage in Livingston. And so I'm really curious to see if the tiered system has an impact on our clean water supply. And if people adjust their usage or consider water conservation methods, is that something we're going to have to be growing more and more aware of? As Livingston has actually had to encourage people to mindfully restrict water usage in the more recent years. I don't know if it's enough. Yet, we'll find out after more data is collected, if this is enough to start, I mean, like, so people voluntarily opt in. For water conservation methods, so time will tell. Anything else commissioners, always we have a motion by Kail and a second by Lyons.
Okay.
Alright, roll call please.
Chair Nudes. Vice Chair Kail.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Next on the agenda. Give you a moment, seems like you might be having. This computer, if I can, so you can use it.
I appreciate that, now we just had a.
Okay. Option stands if you need it.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda is resolution five zero nine six, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Nudes, the item before you is again related to implementing the budget. And this one deals with the sewer rates and the the recommendation is to increase sewer rates by five percent for fiscal twenty four. And again, as I spoke to in the the last item. We have had some funding challenges for certain recent projects. And so the the intent is to be able to fund those projects moving forward. As I prepare to share the screen and show the 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 commission really a similar slide to to last time. And so. Being a a flat fee, we do expect that the the lowest tier for folks that use less than a thousand gallons of of water each month. The the difference in the bill would be one dollar and one penny. And for those folks that I use on the the higher end of ten thousand, the increase would be five dollars and one penny. And so we we do forecast that the average residential consumer is is billed for three thousand gallons each month. And so the the average monthly increase is is expected to be approximately two dollars and twenty one cents. Again, for a residential consumer, so I will stand for any questions the commission may have.
Commissioners, clarifying questions?
Mr. Gager, can you remind us how? How the sewer usage is. That's retained. Don't we look at that in the in the winter months or something to figure out what, how much? Sewer, is that right?
Yeah, I was going to say, I I think that there's probably somewhere more technical.
So for our residential users, we build them sewer based on their water usage. In the months of October through April, their sewer is filled at exactly the same amount as their water usage. So if they use a thousand gallons of water, they are billed for a thousand gallons of sewer. When we go into the summer season, then we're getting, people are starting to to water their lawns. We don't want to charge them sewer fees for for watering their lawn. So we take the average of the water that they used from October to April and that is what they're billed for sewer from. May through September.
Any other clarifying questions? I mean, I will ask one off of that one, so I'm curious, so. Some of the high end users might be using more water during the summer months. And we're assessing them for sewer in the winter months when their usage is lower. But I would assume also in the tiered water system, that there's also probably tiered impacts to the wastewater system, is that correct?
Relatively.
So I'm curious, have we considered a tiered? A tiered wastewater system?
Yes, we we did have some discussions related to a tiered wastewater system. And you know, at at this point, one of the the motivations. Relative to the tiered water system is our capacity on the water side. We do not have a similar capacity in the wastewater side and and really getting folks to conserve on the wastewater side actually is. From a technical standpoint, it's a little bit more difficult and so we we're approaching that on the water side.
Okay.
And and then I, you know, I just if I could, because I, you know. The finance director's point about usage, as I pointed out, a lot of our our larger water users are the folks that have more. Connections, more faucets, and so their their usage doesn't actually decline as dramatically somewhere, say, as as a urination type of usage. Those faucets still get used and fixtures still get used.
I guess what I was thinking is their wastewater is probably much higher in the summer and we're assessing that in the winter. But it looks like your director might have something there, so.
Sorry, but my first comment was related specifically to residential users for our commercial users, they are actually billed sewer based on their water usage throughout the year. So our hotels continue to pay sewer based on what they're using in water even in the summer months, sorry about that.
No, thank you for the clarification that like addresses exactly exactly what I was thinking. Because I'm guessing that the average person in Livingston does not want to. Pay for things that they're not using and they want businesses and developers, et cetera, to pay their own way. That's the thing that we hear as a commission, so that's why I was bringing it up. So commercial is slightly different, thank you for that information. Okay, so we're going to open it to public comment, oh no, I actually need a motion, thank you, look at you all, keeping me on track, thank you. And remember that Mr. Gager does not need to sign this when you make your motion. So looking for a motion on resolution five zero nine six.
I move to approve resolution five zero nine six and authorize the chair to sign resolution number five zero nine six.
One second.
Motion by Kail and a second by Shorts and I'm looking for public comment for people in the room on resolution. Five zero nine six.
Hey, city of Livingston, what the fuck is this?
I'm going to just say we're starting with people in the room. And feel free to remove anyone that you see fit, Mr. Gager.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that. Yo, yo, like, who's the, who's the guy in the? Don't mute me without permission, please, who's the guy in the blue shirt, bro, he is so, stop muting me.
No, I'm just like trying to talk over the noise so that nobody else has to hear it. Good job.
I I'm sorry, is this is this not the raffle for the double decker dildo?
I don't think it is.
So. I just want to, we'll address that commission later, the last time this happened in a meeting, we had to take an action, so that's something that we can address later. We could talk to, I'll talk to Mr. Gager after the meeting about the form.
My apologies.
That is not, you have nothing to apologize for. Tricia, I'm so sorry that you. Please, if you could start just with your name and address, thank you for patience with that.
Tricia Gravel, two oh four East Calendar Street. I'm sorry about my voice, you probably can't hear it all, try to speak as much as I can. Good days and bad days. I understand. The increase in water, I. Understand that my taxes, according to the assessment I just got, is going up twelve point five percent this year. So here I am sitting with a huge tax bill I didn't anticipate. I'm looking at water sewer increases. I'm looking at what you said, Commissioner Schwartz said. In a situation where we will probably never catch up with our water and sewer needs. I'm going to say over and over and over again. First of all, we have a city manager who can comprehend all of this, which I am so grateful for. But I think billionaire wilderness is still required reading for this city commission at this time. I do believe that's what has happening to Livingston is what happened to some degree to Jackson, Wyoming. Not just billionaires, but billionaires and trillionaires moved into a community and there's even someone talking about buying. And there's even someone talking about buying Clyde Park. Okay, so they have an impact on our people who rely on a local economy. And so here's two things that we are just to be so proud of. First of all, we have a growth policy. And I can tell you what a buffer that is for us between this and this movement occurring in our community. So but we are people who are dependent upon the local economy. We're not billionaires who are dependent upon an international corporation that provides people with their income. So our local economy becomes terribly important right now. And I have said since day one, when we did the strategic plan from Livingston, that we include economic health as one of our, of our strategic goals. And I think it's even more important right now than it ever has been. Why wouldn't we take a serious look at income? Why wouldn't we take a serious look at this local economy that is trying to keep up with these people that are moving in that have more money than God? I think this is the time for Livingston to really take economic help for Livingston as a very important item in our strategic plan. Now, eight years ago, we almost got resort tax through as well. Livingston is carrying the cost of tourists as they come in and they don't really get that much money from tourists. There has to be something that is the equivalent of a resort tax. Bob Eppinger and I almost got it through because he was subtle and sincere. We just got it through. And we lost it in the last minute. But economic health, that income-producing thing for local people that are dependent on this local economy, like my business is dependent on. That is, this is the time for this. We are, will never catch up with our infrastructure. Well, these people will have less and less income as they try to face more and more expense. Anyway, this is, I can't even say how important I think this is right now. So I, I, I don't disagree with the water and sewer rates, even though it runs tremendous burden on me and my family, as well as the 12.5% taxation taxes and everything else. But please, this commission, please take into consideration economic health for our local economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Are there other people in the room that want to comment on 5096, Resolution 5096? Now I will go online. Is there anyone online that wants to give comment on this resolution? All right, I don't see anyone. So public comment on Resolution 5096 is closed. Commissioners? Who would like to go first?
I, well, reiterate what I said about the water rates, you know, they go hand in hand. Yeah, everybody's taxes are going up, but it's not. That's due to the state legislature. There's nothing under our control at all. So talk to your state rep, state senators, and maybe think about in the future, sales tax for the property tax relief. That's about all I can say on that. But other than that, there again, with the inflation that we've seen over the last, you know, year and a half or so, that is really jack over costs, you know, as far as materials and stuff like that. Replacing, I mean, just doing what we did on seven, eighth, sixth and seventh street last year, the water, just the cost of materials on that really went up by a lot and had significant cost to that project. You've got to stay on top of it and and hope for conservation with the water and stuff like that. And, you know, going back to the water rates, what's the cost for another reservoir? Yeah, you know, it's, you know, you started approaching that. So it's something to consider as well. So conservation is a very important issue at this, at this time, if we want to keep costs low. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. So we're going first. Other commissioners, Commissioner Lyons?
I will not make the same points that I made for the fact, for the last resolution, although I believe they still try. But I will just speak very briefly kind of to your questions, Chair Newt, about considering tiered system here. I think that that Mr. Gager, Ms. Fetterhoff did a good job of kind of explaining how it's a little bit less applicable. And I, I'm struggling to not make a joke about conservation as in a bust as sewer. So I won't, but maybe I just did, but it really does make sense to, to think about a tiered system and conservation on kind of things coming into the house or, or, or property or whatever. And I think a little bit less on things going out. I yield.
This is a fun, this is a fun deliberation. Who's next?
Top that. I don't think that I can. I, I'm actually, I'm, thank you for all of that. And Commissioner Schwartz, I'll sort of iterate what you said about, you know, property taxes. And it is very unfortunate that our state legislature had the opportunity to do something about property taxes this year and decided not to. They had the opportunity, they had the information, and they decided to get caught up in lots of other things that to me were not as important as our taxes. And now they are out of session and here we sit. So we're here talking with you about property taxes and all the other taxes that the state legislature didn't do anything about and we weren't allowed to do anything about. And so now we are here with you dealing with this. So I think it's really important for all of us to realize that those tax increases did not come from your local government. They came from your state representative and they didn't do their job this year. So I, I just, to iterate with, with what Commissioner Schwartz said, I think it's really important for all of us to realize, like where a lot of this is coming from. And to hold, you need to hold all of your elected officials accountable. And I would hope that you would talk to your state legislatures about the work that they did or didn't do this session.
I don't have any great jokes to add. I'll say that Ms. Fetterhoff's comments about actually used for commercial address my concern. And this is one of the most expensive items we pay for as a community is our treating wastewater. It's the most expensive facility we have. So I just want to make sure that the impacts match, the cost matched the impact. So thank you. That was really what I needed to hear. And that address, yeah, I agree that tiered is not the solution, but I think what was offered by staff makes a lot of sense to me. So nothing to add. We have a motion by Kail and a second by Schwartz. Are we ready to vote? All right, we'll call, please.
Chair Newt. Vice Chair Kail.
For.
Commissioner Friedman. Or Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
And Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Motion passes. And to be clear, I wasn't trying to rush you or hurry you. I was trying to speak over profanity that nobody needs to hear. So that was my intention with that. And I'm sorry for everyone that had to do that. Next on the agenda is a larger item, right? It's the action item. I would like us to take our breaks before we get into this action item on the Wellness Center location. Is 10 minutes enough time for you?
Absolutely.
Can I get a motion for a 10-minute break?
I'll make a motion that we take a 10-minute break.
Second.
Motion by Kail, second by Lyons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I see 5-0, motion passes. We'll see you in about 10 minutes. There'll be a timer up shortly. All right, so we're gonna resume our meeting. We're on action item A, designation of preferred location for Community Wellness Center project. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Newt. The item before you is a another step in the process that we are going through related to the Wellness Center project. You may recall at our last meeting in the end of June, June 20th, I presented to you folks four finalist location possibilities for the project. And so tonight is the night that we would enjoy, staff would enjoy commission direction as we continue to move forward with the project. We've received a bit of community input. And so if it, please, the commission, I will just give a bit of a project update to you folks, the folks here, the folks at home. And then we can get into the location discussion. So I will. Okay. So. Okay. Yeah. Okay. So as I said, this is a bit of a continuation from the last discussion. And just to really bring everybody up to speed with the project, not sure if everyone's followed this as closely as some. The discussion of the Wellness Center really started at the city level in earnest back in, in late 2018 and into 2019, when it made an appearance in the city's 2019 strategic plan in the, as one of the top infrastructure priorities. And at that point, the city was expecting to undertake a feasibility study related to replacing the pool. And the project was, was expected somewhere in the 10 to $20 million range. Shortly after, after that, in January of 2020, after staff had had some time to continue to evaluate the project and the Wellness Center feasibility study was complete, the project estimate had increased slightly to approximately 44 million. And at that point, like I said, the feasibility study had been completed and staff was embarking upon a process to research some funding options. In 2019, as, as part of that feasibility study, a community needs assessment was performed and.
Your big screen is not moving. Sorry.
That's interesting. So as I mentioned,
No, Mike, it's a good time to make this secure.
Yeah, that's a problem. All right, looks like we're synced up. Get apologize for the confusion there. So the, in 2019, the community needs assessment identified an indoor track, an indoor pool and gymnasium as the three most sought-after recreation needs. Multipurpose rooms were, were also rated very highly as far as, as interests for the facility. Earlier this year, the city, as we were working through this process of advancing the project, the city reached back out to the community to confirm the findings of the 2019 needs assessment. And 77% of our 564 respondents agreed that that the indoor pool, the gymnasium and the walking track were the three most desired amenities within the facility. And interestingly, from the 2019 community needs assessment, the feedback that we received, the number one reason that households did not use aquatic sports or fitness facilities was that they were not conveniently accessible. And the second most popular reason for not using such facilities was that they were not designed for the specific activities of a user. And so that really has been why the earlier focus on, on really what is in the facility and the city's outreach back to the community in May of this year to confirm those findings. And and so again, in that, that session earlier this year, we found in fact that, that there was quite a bit of potential to increase the use of the City of Livingston's civic center and pool facilities. About a third of our respondents acknowledged that the last time they used the facilities was more than a year ago. And, and almost as many a quarter noted that they really hadn't used the facility once or so within the last year. In fact, you know, less than 10% acknowledged that they had used the facility in the last week. And a similarly low number had used it in the last month. And so there certainly does appear to be some, some desire in the community for, for some recreation facilities that, that meet their needs. And, and that was expressed, you know, in 2019. Most folks said that if a facility was built, they would use it several times a week. And in fact, when we reached back out to the community in May of this year, we saw that about half of respondents similarly would use the facility several times per week. And so we see very clearly that a, a desire for these facilities that was expressed in 2019 appears to remain here in 2023. And so as you folks on the, the commission know, we in, on March 7th of this year, signed a memorandum of understanding with the Four Ranges Community Recreation Foundation. And the goal of that was to really bring this project that started in 2018 and into 2019 to some sort of conclusion here later this year. And that, that process really is driven by several factors. But, but one of those factors really is the availability of certain capital funds extinguishes at the end of this calendar year. And so that is why there is a renewed push with this project. And why since the beginning of March, the team and I have been reviewing really the four, four project components, which are the, the building's layout and programming, you know, what will be in the building and how it will be used, the, the project location, the, the capital funding and the operating arrangements, how the facility will the the capital funding and and the operating arrangements, how the facility will be operated and funded if it is in fact approved by voters in in November. And so the team continues with more community feedback to work on the first aspect, the the building and site layout, what's in the building and how it will be used. The the foundation continues their work on on fundraising and got a little bit of that conversation in our our last meeting. And and the the conversation on operating arrangements, how to fund the operations of facility is is one that will continue on after this meeting. I've had some preliminary conversations with the county commissioners and next week on the twenty-fifth, I will continue that conversation in person with the county commissioners on the the funding mechanism. And so that really brings us to the the focus tonight in the the path towards putting this before the voters in November to to ultimately approve the project. Tonight's conversation is is focused on location. And in the the last four or so months since we signed the the memorandum of understanding with the Four Ranges Foundation, city team has evaluated thirteen locations and arrived at four finalist project locations. And those locations include the site of the current civic center, the Katy Benel Park that is located out on North M at Bennett Street, the North Side Park, which is the the location of soccer fields and the the Washington School site. In in order to narrow the list of thirteen locations down to the final four, staff applied some initial screens related to the the ownership of the site, size, the location and accessibility to city-owned utilities, and then also just general accessibility of the site and importantly, all four of these finalist sites have been tested to ensure that a forty-five thousand square foot building and companion hundred and fifty space parking lot could be located on site. And and so each of these sites passed that test and and therefore are are considered viable. They they all have access to city utilities and conversations, two of the sites include land that is not entirely owned by the city at this point. And for those two sites, conversations with the owners have occurred and they have consented to our consideration of of the sites and and expressed a willingness to work with the city on those locations if if that is the will of the commission. And so I am happy to to run through these sites. They have been, we were at the farmer's market the the last several weeks and have similarly done some employer outreach and other community outreach. So I apologize if this is a bit redundant to the the commissioners. I I'll move through it fairly expeditiously here. As I mentioned, the the first site under consideration is the existing civic center site, including Miles Park Band Shell area. It is a four and three-quarter acre parcel. If we exclude the grass area where the the band shell and viewing area is, it is a a three acre parcel that is entirely owned by the city. The land was originally quit claimed to the city in nineteen twenty-two by the Miles family, was subsequently transferred to the the school district when Park High was created. And in nineteen sixty-six, the school district quit claimed the land, including the baseball fields, back to the city. And so the city is the owner of of that property and there are no no current restrictions on it. Utility capacity is present by virtue of some recent wastewater work. Site is is served by Wind Rider. It exists about two tenths of mile from Park High and falls in the area of eligibility for the new market tax credit program that we discussed in the last meeting. Related to this site, there are some special considerations, including the the proximity to the Yellowstone River and the the Hundred Year Flood Plane. And and similarly, use of this site would remove the the existing facility, the civic center from future use and and depending on the 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 general scope of the project may have some impacts to to Miles Park, again, depending on the site layout. Secondarily is Katy Benel Park, which as I mentioned, is is located on North M Street at Bennett Street. If there is a one point eight acre city parcel that is highlighted in blue triangular and there are over two acres of adjacent land that are available, that are owned by private entities who have again expressed a willingness to work with the city if that is the desire of the commission. Again, city utility is is present. The the wastewater facility is located just east down Bennett. And the the location is currently served by Wind Rider. Exists about one point six miles from Park High and it sits in the the district that is new market tax credit eligible. Related to this site, a special consideration would be that locating the facility would would alter the existing use of the of the current park and 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 may remove at least a portion of it from from future use, depending on the layout. This this site, as I mentioned, there is some private land that is available that is adjacent, which which offers some opportunities. The the third location is the North Side Park and there are little over two acres that are owned by the city entirely. They, the park itself does have a use contract with the 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 Livingston Soccer Association. However, you know, that that agreement that was signed in in two thousand and six for a a twenty-year base period is is nearing its end. And the the area of the park in question has been not developed at this point. As I think we we saw in our our tours, I had the opportunity to sort the sites of some of them. And and so it it represents an opportunity. Again, it's it is wholly owned by the city. Utility capacity is present. There is Wind Rider service nearby. And we're approximately two miles from from Park High at this location. Importantly, if this location is selected, there is some impact to the the future phase of the soccer facility, which includes a a fourth field. Though I will note that that at present, the the construction of that field is a physical impossibility by by virtue of it requiring some private land that is not owned by the city nor under contract by L I S A. And so you know, it it's questionable if that fourth phase could come fruition. The the fourth site is the Washington School site. It is a two and a quarter acre parcel that is owned by the school district. Had some conversations with both the administration and the board of the district and and they have expressed a willingness to allow the city to acquire the site for the project insofar as fair market value is received by the district in return for the site. It is served by Wind Rider. It is located one point one miles from Park High. And and as I noted earlier, you know, the special consideration here is that there are some site acquisition costs related to to citing the the project here. As I mentioned earlier, each of the the four locations were reviewed by staff against several criteria, including their their ownership, the parcel size, utility connections and and general accessibility. And while we will note that that no site is is perfect, these four sites certainly line up very well with those initial four criteria. Additionally, there are several other criteria that the the commission noted in the the last meeting that were areas of concern or interest for the commission. And and so I I will kind of a a address those those points now. Commissioner Lyons had asked a a question and and sought some information related to accessibility of of each site. And so apologize to everyone for the small type here. Don't worry, the next slide has the the numbers that you need a little bit more more clearly. But I will start by by acknowledging that that three of the the four final sites are on the north side of the railroad tracks and and so thankfully, the Montana Department of Transportation routinely does traffic counts within the city of Livingston. We can see that that we have actually a a fair number of traffic accounts generally speaking in the the affected area and specifically the the crossings over over the tracks. And so while while Park Street sees anywhere from fourteen thousand to ten thousand vehicles per day, depending on where it is measured, that's the average annual excuse me, average daily traffic volume. We can see that that when when looking at the Fitz Street Crossing, and and this actually was from an actual measurement that we'll we'll talk about on the next page, the the actual average daily traffic volume at the Fitz Street Crossing is estimated at five thousand six hundred and ninety vehicles per day. And that's, you know, approximately half in each direction, half going north, half going south. The the underpass that that connects the and Maine, depending on where you are, sees approximately three thousand eight hundred vehicles per day. And again, that is its total north and south. Half in each direction. The city's eastern crossing at Bennett's sees approximately thirty-four hundred trips per day, again, total, half in each direction. And and then down at at River Drive, which is the location of the the civic center currently, MDT has observed that approximately a thousand vehicles per day travel the section by the lagoon, which was the closest measurement to to the civic center. And so while those th- those numbers are actually exceeded most staff expectations when we talked about them. Interestingly, when when we as at a staff level look at the Institute for Transportation Engineers Tenth Generation Manual, we see that a a community recreation center of forty thousand square feet is is estimated to encourage approximately ninety-two trips per day, which again, half in in each direction. And so in in the context of some of the existing crossings, the the expected additional traffic number of vehicles per day really is 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 fairly de minimis. If if we look at the Fitz Street Crossing and and all that traffic were to to flow across that crossing, which is you know, a a heroic assumption at best, it it really is less than a it it's a very small increase on the actual traffic there, right? Somewhere close to one percent. And so we we really do not forecast that in in most of the locations that that this project would have a a very significant impact on traffic. You know, a a bit ironically, the 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 civic center location down on River Drive actually might be one of the most impactful locations. Just just by virtue of the the low traffic currently on River Drive, although let's recognize that some of those trips that exist on River Drive exist because of the current civic center, right? And so that that location is is already you know, that traffic count accounts for such a facility. Just a a little bit of a a note here on on those figures. You know, looking at the the Fitz Street Crossing, again, actually it was measured last in twenty twenty-one and and escalated from there and 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 we can see the the date that it was actually on the the lower part of the slide here. The measurement was taken on Wednesday, July second, twenty twenty-one, and seven thousand and ninety-four vehicles were actually observed on that day. The the common technique in the industry is to to multiply the observed volume by both the seasonal factor and the axle correction factor to to drive the number of accepted vehicles, you know, given given when the the reading is taken. And so that is you know, important to consider that while the average daily volume at Fitz Street, you know, is is fifty-six hundred, it it is certainly greater in the summer and 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 less in the winter than 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 the average. So the the second area of of investigation that the the commission requested in our our last meeting related to land use and the the map before you is is one that was presented in our last meeting and also was included in in some of our public outreach. And this map, which was provided by Montana State University Geography Department, based on the twenty twenty census data, we can see each of the project locations are are surrounded by a a blue outline and in in this in this graphic, the areas that are darker green have a higher concentration of households with children under the age of eighteen. And and as we can see, the areas in the northwest part of the city, specifically by the North Side Soccer Park and Washington School sites have a a higher concentration of of families with children under the age of eighteen. Whereas, as may be expected, when we look at the the current civic center location by virtue of its location near the central business district where there are a lot of commercial enterprises which don't have children and and also a a number of of smaller housing stock that that have fewer bedrooms. You know, there are fewer children in in that area and then the in the northeast part of of the city by the the Katy Benel Park. We see that there is in red there, the rail yard, no children there. But but north of there in in the Green Acres and and lots of youth subdivisions, there are certainly a a higher concentration of kids. You know, I would we estimate at forty percent to seventy percent of households in in that area appear to have have kids in in the orange. An equally important consideration when we when we talk about land use is is the zoning. And you know, as as might be expected, you know, based on the last map, the the area by the the soccer, the North Side Park and and Washington School have have higher, you know, surrounding residential areas relative towards relative to either the the civic center or Katy Benel certainly has has residential areas across Bennett Street. But there's a a a bit of industrial that is directly adjacent to the park. And then importantly, unfortunately, somewhat cut off by this map, we can see just east of of Katy Benel Park, there there is a little bit of purple that that swings down and and that is mixed use zoning that that carries up Garnier. And so the the zoning in that area perhaps is is a little bit more favorable to to non-residential uses. And it certainly offers some some opportunities relative to to this project. And then going back to the the maps that were provided by Montana State University, when we look at household income in in this chart, orange and red are are wealthier areas of the city. Whereas the the more green areas are 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 less wealthy households. And and we see you know, the the areas in the the northwest part of the city by North Side Park and Washington School are are slightly wealthier than than areas out out on Bennett Street and and down by the civic center. And so that is a a another way to to look at the 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 project with with relation to other other facilities and and just considerations of each related to city operations. You know, each each location does have implications for for facility planning. A bit as I noted earlier, you know, with the the civic center, certainly there are implications if the project is located there for both the the band shelf facility as well as the civic center facility. And similarly, the the existing other park uses. At at Katy Benel Park, a a consideration of of the existing park uses because the the construction of a building would certainly change that. As I mentioned, on North Side Park, the the future phase of the soccer field would would be a consideration. Would would be a consideration, though I I did note that that the space does not actually exist to construct that field on. On land that is controlled by the city. And then in in Washington School, there's of course consideration for the school facility. However, the school board has has granted the city permission to to work with this site, consider this site. And the indications there are that 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 does not pose a hindrance to the administration of of school operations. And then, as I, as I mentioned, you know, earlier in in the the conversation about criteria. You know, one additional criteria that that you folks had. You know, kind of shown interest in were were other location specific costs of the project. And and this really is important because the the Four Ranges Foundation. And I don't see really any representatives of the foundation in the room, but they have. Established a target of twenty five million dollars for the capital construction support for the project. Approximately nineteen million of that has been secured, including a a ten million dollar grant to to name the facility. And and actually, part of that nineteen million, there's there's five million that has a. The timeliness component to it, which is is driving our our action here and our path towards November consideration by the voters. And and so again, approximately nineteen million has been secured. Another two million is is being considered by by donors and. Depending on on the location and several other factors, it is possible that approximately. Four million in in new market tax credits may may be eligible for the project's use. But, you know, within the context of that twenty five million, I think it is important to note that. While we would like all twenty five million of that to to be put into the 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 building. There there are some considerations with each location that that may consume some portion of that that construction budget. And so when we really frankly, when we look at at all of these locations, there are there are accessibility improvements. Even the current civic center location today, if if one were to try to approach that from from any approach. You'll notice there are no sidewalks. And so we we have accessibility improvements, not just on these four parcels of town. But because of its its location relative to the the Yellowstone River. There is the the additional consideration there that the the building requires some some additional fortification and and possibly elevation. I think we heard that from from the foundation in our in our last meeting. Katie Benel Park, you know, again, there are some accessibility improvements, Northside Park similarly. There's there's no sidewalk curb and gutter within several blocks of of that site. And so the city would engage in some work there. And and then similarly, at at Washington School, in addition to any accessibility improvements. There would be site acquisition costs. And so, you know, I think it is important for the commission to to consider these as as you folks. Contemplate the the location of the project and and so. With that, I will turn and just give give the commission and and the remove the room and folks at home a bit of a reminder. On the 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 path forward from here. Because this this project still has several stages of approval to to move forward before it that it can. Actually be constructed, if that's the will of the voters. So tonight, I have am hoping that that the commission here can provide staff direction on a preferred location. And then by August fourteen, it if the the Park County Commission sees fit. They will approve a an item to be put on the ballot in November. As I said, that conversation will will start next week on the the twenty fifth, when I present to the the county commission. And and try to move through that process. And and again, to to be clear, the the county commission would will be asked to put on the. The ballot a referendum question to voters concerning the creation of a special district. The special district would assess properties, the cost of operating and maintaining the facility. And and those those funds would be provided through through an assessment that ends up on on property tax bills. This is, this is a requirement of of one of the grants. That's that the the donation cannot be released to the project until approval of an operating funding mechanism is is obtained. And so that is why this this avenue is is being pursued at this time. And 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 will be put to voters on November seventh. To determine if if there is interest in in funding this, the operations and maintenance of the facility. At least through a a property tax assessment. Remember that the 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 capital costs of the project at this point appears though they will be will be covered by the Four Ranges Foundation. And so I believe that is a fairly comprehensive update. And I will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gager. Before moving to questions, I thought I would just go over our process tonight. You're welcome. And this is, this will be a familiar process because it's the one that we we did a little work together on. So we'll start with. And you all have. An additional thing to help. Yes, wasn't sure folks would remember to bring it up. So the first thing we'll do is we'll go through permission, clarifying questions. And then we'll do public comments, we'll hear public comments. And then we'll go back to the commission in case there's any follow up questions about. The item before us. And then we'll enter. Into our deliberative process that we used recently during a special exception, a special exception permit. So we'll go through the locations one by one and we'll talk about. The benefits for for the location and the challenges for the location. And we'll do that one by one for each site. And after we've had a chance to consider all four sites, we'll do sort of a check in with each of the commissioners to see where we're at on each site. And. But both like sort of a gut check for lack of a better word and also any like new generated thoughts that you might have based on our conversation. So that is where we're at for process. Does anybody have questions about that or?
In terms in that process, where we have to have a motion?
Yes, so. I believe we will, I think that it would make the most sense to hear. Normally, we do a motion before we hear from the public, but given that this is a site selection. I think it makes most sense to hear from the public before we do a motion, otherwise we'll just have. A lot to. To amend potentially, yes.
Do we need a motion for an action item where we're just providing direction to the city manager?
Right, we don't necessarily need a motion, but I think in the case of this decision, since it's such a large one, it might make the most sense. Just to do a motion to make it most clear.
Yeah, it's kind of hard, but it's not like yes or no questions for.
Right, and so I think I think we'll see after we go through these one by one. Based on previous experience with the five of us, I think we're probably, it's probably going to be more clear after we start deliberating and have a conversation. But I also think the weight of the decision is enough that it might make it easier, depending on where we're at at the end of that deliberation. And it might make it easier and more clear direction for the city manager if we're actually making a motion. But when we get to that point, we can check in, if that makes sense, Mr. Gager, and see what your. Preferred processes after we get through the deliberation, does that sound good? Does that work for the commission? Knowing that this is. Probably the biggest deliberation we've ever had to. Together in a lot of ways, it's going to take some time, but we'll work to be. On task and stay stay on point during this. The other thing is, I believe, Mr. Gager, you'll be able to assist us a little bit, right? With some sort of visual.
Yes.
As we work through the sort of commissioners list of the pluses and challenges to each site. They'll be able to sort of have something on screen, so it makes it easier for the five of us and the public to track the five of us, like what we're talking about. So we'll put something like this up. When we get to that point of commission deliberation, does that sound good for the commission? And we'll just have lots of patience with each other tonight, if if you don't mind.
You want to schedule a time to break or just want to keep it?
I I like the agreement that we've made in the past where we try to break every one and a half hours for commissioners. So around eight thirty or so, hopefully, we'll find a natural pause there, but if we don't.
Somewhere in that area.
Yeah, and so if there's a natural pause somewhere in that area, we'll pause then, but if there's. If we're in the middle of something, it wouldn't be perfect, but maybe we'll have to pause in the middle, so we can all. Yeah, does that work for you, Commissioner Short? Okay, is it, are we good on process? Does anybody have questions? Okay, so thanks for your patience with that. The first thing we'll do then is clarifying questions. The first round, clarifying questions from commissioners. So whoever would like to go first? Commissioner Shorts?
I don't know if this is clarifying or not, but. Do we have a fair market value for Washington School site? It's going to come up sooner or later.
No, I think that's a clarifying question.
At at this point, we have not gone through the assessment process or appraisal process.
Thank you. So that would be. That would come after if that was the selected site, okay?
And please recognize that the conversations I have had with the district, albeit we had a leadership change. Have centered around different forms of fair market value.
Okay.
And so they may not all be cash contributions.
Right, okay.
Does that help? Given any other questions? So we're just asking questions right now, just questions. Yes, do you have any questions for Mr. Gager?
I guess I just wanted to say. The Washington School. If that's the one that. Gets completely torn down, the the building can't be used.
In in all likelihood, that would be the the case. The the district has provided an assessments of the building. And it it does have a a number of issues that that would be costly to to remediate for for this project.
Because I was thinking, if you had to demolish the schools, start fresh, you've got a heck of a cost right off the bat. If you can adapt inside with it, that's why I'm asking the question. So it's a question whether you can utilize materials if you have to. Get rid of a lot of stuff, it's going to cost you a heck of a lot of money to begin with, and just get it started. So that's what I saw with that little picture. Civic Center to me is out. Just from a flood thing. And I think it would be better, I I love the idea that the farmer's market can use more space and be more productive. Just getting rid of the civic center altogether, I I don't know if the city needs that building at all, they want to put any money into it. But I I I don't see that as a good good option.
So, yeah, so we're just going to ask questions right now, we'll wait to deliberate on the sites. But yeah, is that a question though about the civic center? Is there, yeah, can you respond to that, the same kind of question about the civic center if that site were selected?
If the the civic center site were selected, yes, the the there would be some demolition costs associated with that project location as well. If a site other than civic center is selected, we would go through a process to evaluate and determine the the future of the civic center. There's been some some expressed desire from other community groups to continue using the facility. But that would be a a conversation that the the recreation department, the community could have.
Yeah, any other clarifying questions at this time? There was one question I got, and I just want to make sure it gets addressed now. Or two, actually, one question, there's two questions that have come up. One, they came up at at the farmer's market is different deed restrictions. I know you talked about Miles Park, but I believe some folks were concerned about a potential deed restriction on. The park on North M Street that it needed to remain a certain type of park. I believe staff may have looked at the history of properties, can you elaborate on that, if there's any restrictions?
Yeah, no, absolutely, staff has reviewed all all of the the facilities. And there do not appear to be any restrictions that would would prevent locating the project at at any of the sites. That was one of our very first flags related to the ownership. Which is how I know the the quitclaim history of of the Miles Park situation so well.
Okay, and then the other question that I got just on break here was why are we talking about the location now? If voters may choose to vote this down on the ballot, why would we spend time right now having these conversations? Can you elaborate a little bit on why we're doing the process this way?
Absolutely, I I think that's a a very fair question and reasonable question. And and I would offer that in order for the city and foundation to develop a project. That can reasonably be put forward to voters in November. In a way that voters will understand what they are voting on. We need to, as a city and foundation, to determine certain elements of the project. Because ultimately, the question that will be asked is is about creating a special district that will be funded by an estimated assessment number. And so to get to that assessment number, we need to understand what the building is and how it will be operated. Before we can understand, you know, what the building is and how it will be operated, we really need to determine the location or a a preferred site for the project. From there, we will start to using the community feedback that's been gathered over the last four years. We will work to to craft a building plan and a site plan that then we can a a sign operating costs to. And and present a complete package to voters. We we expect, given the timeline, that that all of that work would would be complete. Certainly in the the Labor Day timeframe, and and then it would be an informational push from from Labor Day to to Election Day.
Thank you. I think. That's it for my clarifying questions right now. Alright, so next up, we're not going to do a motion first for the reasons already stated, if that works for the commission. And then we'll open it, we're going to start with people in the room. Actually, there is one more question, I'm so sorry, I knew I missed something, I wrote it in a different color, so I. I lost myself. The last question, I just wanted to be clarification, because this is another question that has come up repeatedly. Mr. Gage, I don't know if you can answer this, or if there's someone else that can answer it, but are there any limitations to the monetary donations?
Having reviewed the two major gift letters, I I I will say, those are the two that I've been privy to. There's a a ten million dollar gift and a five million dollar gift. And the the limitations, as I pointed out, one of them contains a a deadline for action. That is the the end of this year. And then the the other gift does contain a a stipulation related to the facility naming. There are some some deadlines in that agreement, but they're not as firm as in the other agreements. And so those are, those are the two project limitations or considerations related to donations at this point.
Do you have anything more specific about the naming, or is it just general at this point?
The the donor, having read the letter very recently, actually. The donor has has requested their name on the facility as as the primary name one.
Okay, thank you for that. So deadline is end of year and then naming, okay. Thank you. I think those are the questions that I've heard most often, so.
If I could just clarify, the deadline means the end of the year is tied to the operating mechanism for the facility, the special district.
That's what I thought.
That's why I thought we had that.
Thank you for having the building completed, but yeah.
The operation.
Okay, great. Thank you. Now we're ready for public comment. We'll start with people in the room before we go online. And I'll just ask people to start their name and address and wait for, if you could wait for me to be ready before the next person. No, you're good, you're good right here. I just mean, sometimes people start and we're still sort of taking notes and processing a comment, so. Pastor Kayla, you're gonna help me.
How much time are we allowing?
Four minutes, but I am, given the density of this topic, like all big topics, I just would ask people to try to not be too duplicative. If there's people that already said exactly what you think, you know, you can say like, I agree with so and so, and try to keep your comments unique and not just say the same thing over and over for three hours. That really helps us because we believe you if you say that you agree with your neighbor. But I also want to make sure everybody gets to say their unique perspective, so this is a no way trying to hamper or limit you. Okay.
And I, and I would just say, I will give you a thirty second warning. Okay, just fair warning. I'll say thirty seconds when you get to that point.
Thank you. That is perfect. Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. If you could just.
That's why it makes it easy to go first.
Just serve your name and address.
My name is Tom McNamee and I live at two sixteen South Fifth Street. You're in town. My promise is very brief. I, I want to urge you not to vote on this tonight, because I think there's still too much up in the air. I don't think any of the sites are ideal. I think you can do better. Certainly, as Mr. Friedman already said, the one, the site that looks most attractive is the one that's least workable, namely the one in Floodplain. I've consulted with a geomorphologist and engineer, a climate scientist, hydrologist, all of them are familiar with Yellowstone drainage, and have all said, just don't do it. You haven't climate changed that we're looking at now from what we saw last year. It's crazy. Additionally, this is something Mr. Schwartz and I discussed last week. To make everything right on a vote this November, on top of the tax increase that we've just seen from the state, people who here might have paid fifty thousand dollars for their house twenty years ago and now seeing it appraised at three hundred thousand dollars, in that case, they're gonna be seeing a tax if they vote for this, an additional hundred dollars a year. I think there are gonna be an awful lot of living, people in Livingston who simply won't vote for that. And then you can see your ballot measure go down. And then what happens? What have you got? Nothing. Whole project just simply fails. You haven't got any way to keep it going. A conceivable alternative would be to make the whole thing, not a government project at all, but perhaps an existing, take the existing five oh one C three fundraising organization and make that the operating entity for the whole thing, and then let there be an endowment raised perhaps to operate it with. Because if the people here won't pay, won't pay, raise their own taxes to operate it, it's gone.
Thank you, Tom. Hi, Tim.
Hi, Tim Stevens, three fifteen North Third Street. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. Thank you especially City Manager for all the work you've done looking at all the different sites. I think it was very thorough and super impressive and did your homework. So it's, it's, makes it easier for us to sort of sort through alternatives. We've been, we've been, I've lived here almost thirty years and, and we've been talking about a new pool facility in thirty years, so to suggest that now is not the time for it, it's ridiculous. Now is the time for it, and tonight's the night to make major part of that decision and put it to the voters in the fall. See what happens. So just thirty thousand foot, and I won't go into detail on this, but you know, we need it. There's no argument there. This is a community side facility. This was a process that went through with, with over five hundred of our fellow citizens who identified what we really needed. That's been echoed many times. This is a once in a generation opportunity that we can't blow. Like I said, we've been discussing this for probably longer than I've been here. And this is as close we've gotten, the money in the bank, the designs, the community energy, the locations. This, this is our, this is our opportunity. And, and the last thing I'll say is, is having worked in the foundation for about eight years now, it is unheard of in, in my experience and the experience of the foundation that I worked for, that a, a major project like this would only be asking citizens to support the maintenance and operations over, and those when they're putting a hundred and two million dollar facility on, on, up for a vote and a very small portion, let's say three million dollars, they're, they're planning on raising from, from private interests. So to have a commitment to raise the entire capital to build this thing from five to P is just completely unheard of in, in, in my experience. And so I get that. The other things I, I want to raise before I get to me, this is, I, 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 I saw that Grant had raised the, the soccer field location as a possible problem with the, with LSA in terms of a, a final phase of the fields. I'm no longer following the soccer program, but I was for years and I was involved with the development of those fields up there. That's, I don't think, and again, someone like Maggie could shoot me for saying this, but I don't think that's of interest in, in building another phase, so I don't think that that's a problem anymore. I, I think we got the fields that we need. So, um, so I, I appreciate seeing the, the list of, of, of criteria by which you've been, you've been thinking about this. I kind of came up with my own. I, I wrote a letter that's made a little bit more but the, the things that I was, I've been thinking about is consistency with growth, growth policy. The design not being driven by the site, the design being driven by the, the needs identified in, in the community. Prematurely shrink this thing. Accessibility, especially, especially for underrepresented communities and, and individuals. That means being able to walk by public transportation per facility. Proximity to, to underserved populations, and I really appreciated the maps that you had up there. Obviously, cost. Ability to capture all available funding. When I say that, I'm talking about the four million dollar new market tax credits. Thank you. Minimizing carbon footprint and overall fit with, with the neighborhood. And, and I guess, I guess, you know, what I, what I'd say, and I know that, that there's been a flashpoint around the civic center location, I believe from a proximity to the human population of this town, that's the best site. I also don't believe that it would pass if you put that on the ballot. I think of all that criteria, I'd say that M Street Park is your, is your best chance. Because I think it rings many of those bells, not all, but I think it's, I think it's the site you need to be looking at. So anyways, that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Tim.
Is there any way that you could see the time?
She's giving them a thirty second. In a non-intrusive way.
Very good. Thank you.
You can also save a piece of paper if you wanted to. Thirty seconds if they do it. Federal hearings. Are you ready for? Thank you. Would you please just start with your name and address?
My name's Tress Shapen and I live on South Main. And for years, I worked for the largest planning board in the country. And the number one question in anything which held the most weight is quality of life. You're looking at these four spots that build it in down by the river, take out the community center is a negative quality of life. The school is flatlined. The soccer field is flatlined. Or the Mile Street Park would be a positive quality of life in there. And also you have a look at demolition. Demolition costs are always more than stated. The civic center, you are definitely gonna run into lead pipes and asbestos. That would double the cost of just tearing it down. I don't know about the school, but excuse me. Also, you spoke of traffic. You said that the civic center would be the least. Well, it should always be the least. I walk in that park every night. There are children in the park, bicyclists, dogs, the water pole. Any increase in traffic will be detrimental to the quality of life in this town. The M Street Park seems to be the best situation because it would be your lowest cost of building. And it will also bring up the quality of life for that area. Now, I don't know about here, but when people were working for me, if they didn't take in the pound quality of life and the cost of doing the business, I would fire them immediately because they weren't intelligent enough to do the job. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Caroline Reader, three one five, South Eighth Street. And full disclosure, I am a member of the board for the Four Ranges Foundation. I just haven't been to any of the city meetings in person. My question or comment is when we're discussing the sites and costs, I haven't heard anything said about that M Street Park is a super fun site and in the brownfield. And so I didn't know if the city or anyone has done any research or has any information regarding building in that area.
Thank you, Caroline.
Joe Phelps.
I'm sorry, just one second, Joe. This is an example of me writing slowly. It'll take me a second. Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome, and thank you for what you do. I believe the objectives of this overall project is to improve the physical and mental health of the people in the area. And one place where it would be terribly underserved is if the entire center is on the north side. Because if you can imagine that in the, and as the days get shorter and get darker and schools out and there's not a lot of, not a lot of things to do for the kids. The coaches don't have a place to, to, to have a batting cage, a driving range, a putting range, a soccer field inside to run field, run plays and so forth. And so there is a, a, a need in terms of the mental health of our youth, which is indexes, as we all know in this room, index is extremely high for suicide. And there's plenty of research that shows that that is directly related to time spent on social media. And in the winter, the, the, the use of social media goes high. That's when we see our suicides. And it, it, because as, as natural, some kids are better off somewhere else other than their house. If, if they're in their house, they don't want to be where their parents are, so they're in the bedroom, they're on cyberspace. And so we have a problem with that, with addressing the key mental health of our youth. I've, 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 I wrote the letter about doing a field house, which can be, which can be accomplished for a hundred and twenty five, a hundred and fifty dollars a foot. The, as it is with the Aquatic Center, because it's an aquatic center, it's like seven hundred dollars a foot. And if you had a field house and an aquatic center, the way it's, it's currently designed, there'd be some redundancy. So what I'm saying is if the wind is blowing, so you're gonna choose a, a north side center for the, for the aquatics and some other things, then as you said, go back to the drawing board in terms of how do we fulfill the needs of the community? Build a, a field house by the women's softball field. Work with the school. I think the city and the county and the school need to work closely together to make this happen. So you don't have to buy the land and you can build a dirt floor field house and bring it in for less than three million dollars. You can do it in less than a year and immediately attack the, the mental health situation that we have with our school age children. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Did you want to say something? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else in the room? Hi, James.
Hey. James Wilich, one oh eight South F every day. I'm gonna be real short. Last year during our amazing flood, this amazingly destructive flood, I'd like to point out the hospital was closed, not because you couldn't, because the water was in it, but because you couldn't get to it. And I feel that the civic center location is only an inkling away from being a very similar situation for a massive building. So as far as mustering points go, doesn't sound like a good spot to put it right in the middle of where your disaster is gonna be. That's it.
Thank you, James.
Did someone lose a pair of glasses? Oh, there we go.
What a courteous, what a courteous public we have. Thank you.
Yes, please. Jeanie Tatum, thirty one Yellowstone Trail, Livingston, Montana. I'll reiterate what Joe Phelps said, but like to sum it up by saying that maybe the win-win for everything that I've read about in the paper, the arguments or the pros and cons is to have part of it on the north side, part of it on the civic center side, leave the civic center there for the skating people and backflow or whatever. Leave the band shell, you know, again, the adult softball fields that are sort of the geographically handicapped, but beyond the, the softball girls field, that might be a great location for a field house that would meet the needs of the coaches and the high school, and the kids could walk to that. I'm concerned about that. I just Googled that your wind rider transportation, it stops at six fifteen. So that's a limitation. I mean, I don't know what the plans are for how long the, this wellness center is gonna be open, but you know, that might be a limiting factor for transportation needs for, for kids and, and adults that need to get there. So anyway, maybe a win-win is both sides of town. Leave everything up that needs to be up, that needs to be protected by a lot of the people that have had great comments about the history of the town that I don't know and why things need to stay the way they are. Less demolition, demolition cost. Mr. Friedman, thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Hello.
Hi, Bruce.
Bruce Lee, fifty seven Cutthroat Lane. Don't let the name of the street scare you. You know, I don't know you guys all that well. Let me give you a quick history for, I mean, moved here nineteen eighty eight. Park High, teacher and coach throughout. And since nineteen eighty eight, there hasn't been a year that I haven't been a, a volunteer coach in multiple sports. It's not just baseball, football, basketball. Those were my three primary ones. So I just wanted to give you a background that I'm here to try to do something a little bit different, which has been shared, everything has been shared, it's been wonderful. But I'm talking about the kids, and I am here for the kids, and that's my goal here. And since nineteen eighty And since nineteen eighty-eight, there may not be a person, I'm sure in the room, that spent more time in the civic center than me. Coaching, playing and just participating. Up to this day, I still do. So if there was anyone who'd be upset about getting rid of the civic center, it would probably be me, me. But here I go, I drive downtown and I drive into the, where the civic center is at, and I just see this community of kids, parents walking. All this beautiful stuff that makes a community. And I'm like going, can we not get over, I mean, when there's engineers, I mean, our, I'm part of the Four Ranges Board, we've had engineers that say. You know, it hasn't flooded Mel since nineteen, it was built in thirty-seven approximately, never flooded once. And so are we willing to take a little bit of, and we can engineer where we can build things up? And we can do this. It's all been determined through engineers and professionals beyond me. That we can have it at the civic center here and make this community something even more glorious than it is right now. And I'm not gonna, I mean, the Katie Bonnell Park, you know, I've been here for a long time, been in real estate and that's where they tore houses down. That's where they got rid of everything. So it was a, there was a plume up there, maybe the plume's gone, maybe it's not, I'm not sure. But it's, you know, and I like the idea of doing something in a neighborhood that needs it, but I just feel that the civic center. Is right where this can make our community bigger, stronger, faster. And if I was your coach, I'd say, let's do some extraordinary. Let's make this thing work right there and you'll get some blowback. But at the same time, there's a lot of people, I mean, somehow everywhere I go and my friends aren't vocal or something, I go, yeah, they're thinking about the M Street Park, Katie Bonnell Park. And they drop the draw and they go, why would they do something there? But I, I understand it too. So I kind of want you to realize that I'm not talking about the pickleball or anything else. I'm talking about the schools and the kids. It's being right there and making this really part of the community. Out anywhere else, it's not going to really be that way for adults, kids and everybody else. So. Do the tough thing. I think we can make this work. I really do. And our committee is, you know, open to all suggestions. But at the same time, our, my priority would be the civic center. So thank you for your work. Where'd you get this guy from? Holy cow. Yeah. So that's it. Do the right thing, do the tough thing, but please, the civic center would be a good one. And I think it could be demolished really quick. Because it's not much of a building.
Thank you, Bruce.
Hi.
Hi.
July Hardisty, five eleven North End. I just want to say I pretty much agree with everything that Bruce just said. And I live on North End, so I can see that park from across the street. Love taking my daughter there. I don't want to lose that park and I know a lot of my neighbors don't as well. In my mind, the civic center is the best option. You already own the land. That building is kind of embarrassing, does not offer a lot to the city. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, July.
I'm John Buckner. This is my daughter Grace Buckner. We live by three twenty-five South Main. We would like to stay.
Yeah.
Okay. She enjoys swimming. She enjoys the outdoors. She loves the ducks. You bring more traffic, more crap down in there. And take, you know, there's a chance that part of the farmer's market that is her thing in the summer. She used to go to M Street as a young child. She even agrees that she thinks that that would be the best spot. For this, if this does go through. The traffic down there, like I said, trash, as you're taping, he goes down there every night for walks. I actually am his neighbor. I actually go for walks with him. And we enjoy the ducks and the wildlife. We do not want to see tons and tons of traffic down there. It's already hard enough in this town finding traffic for. Handcapped people such as myself and the other disabled veterans and things. And. Black people have already spoken, Kim said. What we're saying. I don't agree with putting where the civic center is. Why would we take a chance? Okay, maybe it hasn't quite been over a hundred years there. But why would we want to take a chance on a multi-million dollar project? Something happening like last year and then Levy's going or something and destroying everything that was just built. Went across the tracks on M Street. It's wide open space. There's nothing there. There's nothing to get destroyed. And our kids need something. Not just mine, all of ours. There's nothing in this town for our children, really. They got the skate park finally, you know. Yes, we have Sacagawea Park. She grew up in that park. You know, we have the baseball because my grandchildren played softball down there. You know, and I hate seeing that. That's it. You know, I've heard things that the band shell and the farmer's market won't be disturbed. But how do we know it's not going to be when, like. Mr. Chicken was saying, tear down that, the cost of everything of removing the rec center, okay? But about parking, everything else, how far is it going to go into the park? Is it going to ruin our farmer's market? Are we still going to have a farmer's market? This is one of my questions. You know, so. I think. M Street.
I also think M Street would be the best thing because yes, all of us kids, including me, need somewhere to go. And really, I only really go to the pool and farmer's market because it's a fun place. And there's so many kids just balled over the side playing on video games and there's not really much places for us to go here. So if we put this in somewhere. Like M Street Park. I think that'd be a great idea. But because the, the civic center would be another option, but it would be a flood plain. You don't want to take that risk. I'm just speaking for those kids, so.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Grace.
Thank you.
Father, daughter. Testimony. Awesome. Thank you.
Hi, Elaine.
Hi. Elaine Willits, one oh eight South F. I just want to know, is there a plan if it, it goes to a vote and then it is voted down? Is there a plan? Please. Thanks.
Thank you, Elaine.
Hi, Patricia.
I don't know you. Just kidding.
Practically a stranger there.
Patricia Grabo, two oh four East Callender Street. Spent a great deal of my childhood in Yellowstone Park. My father built the girl's dorm behind Lake Lodge. So I lived in the woods. And at the time, Tom Helen was building inspector for Yellowstone Park and my father and Tom fought. With every ounce of strength they had, saved Canyon Hotel. And the argument about saving, not saving Canyon Hotel, which is no building. Like Old Faithful Inn it's. But it was historic and it was amazing. And if you were a child and you climbed on four-foot logs into Canyon Hotel, you'd know how absolutely amazing it was. But they had a grid path. Hotel in Spokane, Washington felt we should, we should become. We should become contemporary. And that wasn't a contemporary building. That was an old historic building. So they tore it down. And we no longer have Canyon Hotel. It had the same kind of gorgeousness to it that Old Faithful Inn has. The civic center has been flooded twice. So that, and it is an amazing building. And I am adamant, I spent ninety-five hours for Dr. Donovan Ripkemeyer to tell me that. The worst thing you can do environmentally is tear down an historic building. So keep, it keep flaunting the civic center as if it's, it's nothing. It is something. And Sacramento Park and Miles Park is a gift from generations who have loved this town. Let's just let, accept that gift and enhance it and go back. Really have that civic center become what it is. Okay, so quickly. I, and also the growth policy that sixteen hundred people worked for said, don't build. On an island in Yellowstone River. So all those people who've gone before us have, have possibly hopefully taught us some lessons along the way. But. M Street Park is such a great idea. I was on the city commission. There is no plume. The M Street Park, Amy Reynolds was the great, one of the great people that ever lived in Livingston or came through Livingston, Montana. For eight years, I went to every single hearing there was on that plume and how we mitigated that plume. M Street Park has no plume. There is no carcinogenic anything at M Street Park. So why wouldn't we, and I've been involved in urban planning for almost fifty years. Why wouldn't we enhance a neighborhood? Why wouldn't we take that part of town that needs to grow beautifully? That's what Livingston does. It grows beautifully. And make that a part of town even more beautiful than it is right now. Take a look at that view from M Street Park. It's amazing. It has all the qualities we're looking for. And, and won't be destructive, won't tear down something that is historical, that has great merit. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Is there anybody else in the room that wants to give public comment tonight on this agenda item? So we're at sort of a natural pausing time before I go online for comment and we're at a breakpoint for commission. How many minutes do you all need? Do you want to do five or ten? How many? Is five worth? Okay. How about a motion then for a five minute break?
Also to.
And also to extend the meeting. I will, I'd like to make a motion to take a five minute break and also extend our meeting.
Second.
The motion by Kail and a second by Lyons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So five zero and thank you. I feel very supportive as chair that you all remember the things that I sometimes forget, like extending meetings. So we'll see you in. Yep. So we'll see you in five minutes. There's going to be a timer shortly on the screen and we come back, we'll go to public. We're going to come back to public comment. Commissioners, are you all ready? We're going to go to folks online now. So I'm just going to go in the order that I see hands raised. I'm going to start with Sarah Boyle.
Hi, this is Sarah Boyle. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Sarah, can you just start with name and address as if you were here for the record?
Sure. Sarah Boyle, two fifty-four Fleishman Creek Road. So. Um, I just would like to start by saying that I have two young children and we drive past the north side soccer fields every day on our way to and from town. Um, I would echo Caroline's concern about the superfund site because I know it does exist on that side of town near the M Street Park. And basically tonight, I just wanted to say that having two young kids, having a different use for the civic center. Would be my first choice of somewhere to locate a new wellness center. But then also having driven by the north side park every day, I would love to see a facility on that side of town. It seemed that that area only really gets used during soccer season for kids who play soccer. And it would be nice to have something for the north side kids. And there are a lot of them, I can attest to that. To have somewhere to go and something to do in that area. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Next on the list, I see Jesse Wilcox.
Thanks, Melissa. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, Jesse Wilcox, six one seven North Eighth Street here in Livingston. I am going to try and be brief. My vote is the Katie Bonnell Park. And for the following reasons. I believe that that location is following growth policy. With respect to the recommendations of the Upper Yellowstone Watershed Group and keeping any new development out of the flood plain. I also appreciate the idea of putting amenities on the north side of town. And disclosure, I sit on the City of Livingston Planning Board. And what I like to think about when we have projects come before us is that we're not just planning for the next. Two years, three years, five years, ten years, we're planning for the next twenty, thirty, fifty years. And so there's a lot of growth coming into our community. And I like the idea of keeping the future in mind when we are planning this facility. So that's my vote. And thank you very much for all the work that's gone in to providing everyone so much information about the various locations. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse. Is there anyone else online who would like to offer public comment?
Yes, can you hear me? Hello? Hello?
Yeah. Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Dave Miller. I can hear you. Would you like to start with your name and address for the record?
Dave Miller, one one three West Park. I'd like to make kind of an historic perspective on this. City councils do many, many, many decisions and, and historically, people don't look back at them. They, the records go in the basement and not heard about it. But this, this, this obviously a very extremely, very important decision. And it'll be a, a real feather in the city's cap if they can pull off a good site here. So the, the magnitude, as you all know, is pretty darn big. And I, I. I see the three sites that are on the, on the north side are all pretty safe bets. And, you know, I kind of prefer the, the M Street myself, but, but any of those three sites would be safe. And, and historically, no one's going to look back and say, oh, you made a huge mistake. And it can be a modern building and easy, easy to put up and, and so forth. And a lot of modern designs can be used, et cetera, et cetera. The one, the one at Civic Center. As other complications, other than just flooding, that's an historic site and, and the architecture, whatever's put there has to, it really needs to, to blend with the rest of the city. We, it's got to blend with that site and it's an historical site, which, which means it'd have to be a really good architect to do it. It'd probably be a lot more money to do it properly. And you don't want to just tear the building down and put some modern piece of, of building in there in an historic site. It doesn't make sense. And the other thing that's extremely important that nobody's brought up is that band shell is, is one of the, one of the coolest ones in the whole country. And the people of Livingston perhaps don't realize how, what a wonderful asset that is. So, so anything that affects that whole park, the farmer's market or that bandstand. You know, is, should, should not be done. And, and, and frankly, city council can look back at it and, and generate future generations and their grandkids. If, if they, if, if they do a bad job on that, it's, it's, you know, it's hell to pay that you, you made a stupid mistake. And, but if you pull it off, it's really a, a, a real glory thing. And, and I realize getting the funding right is tough and I can't, I can't advise on that. And, and I'm, I'm not a builder, but it, it just, that, that place needs to be preserved and, and it could be a lot more cost involved in doing that. So, so my, my, my leaning is towards the, the M Street location. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Steve. Is there anyone else online that would like to give public comment? Oh, you see one?
Yeah.
Melissa?
Oh, there we go. Hi, Arlene. Could you just please start with your name and address, please, Arlene?
Arlene, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can hear you wonderfully.
Arlene Romer de Feltray at one oh six Elm Lane up on the north side here. So I just have a few different questions from different angles. So when you were showing the, when Mr. Gager was showing the feedback on the project, the chart had some numbers and there were some numbers in the middle of that were in parentheses. Was that the number of people who responded? If you remember that.
Arlene, we'll come back and answer questions.
Okay, great. Because it looked like if that was the number, it was a pretty, you know, it was a small number of people in the whole population. It doesn't mean their answers weren't good or that it's not a good project, but it just looks like the, you know, what's been assessed is based on a small sample of the entire population. And of course, the population has increased a lot in the last year or two. Also, the Wind Rider. You know, it is a public service, so it seems like it could be there could be rescheduling or extension of hours that would specifically serve this project. My other, one person commented, if if they use M Street, they get rid of the playground. Another question is, could a playground be added to the design of the of this wellness center? And coming back to the the terrible question of money and funding, so I I'm kind of a little old fashioned. I I think there really should be a balance between what the public pays for and that people should pay for services they actually use. So I I know Mr. Gager had some different comments on that in that article in the paper last week, but my inclination would be that there's really nothing wrong with asking people to pay for services they actually use if people you know, are have hardships, you can work with them, but you know, I grew up in New York. We use public transportation. You paid for it. You know, here you don't pay for Wind Rider, right? I don't see why people can't, you know, pay for services they actually use instead of dividing that weight so much. And as people have commented, these are very, very challenging times for for a lot of people because of the increase in the property taxes, the level of inflation and, you know, all of these different assessments that keep going up for the people who live in the city. So I, you know, I I just don't know how that would work. There, you know, there seem to be a lot you know, people who could contribute to it in different ways. And I know I'm not the expert on the finances. But it my my thought would be that it seems like it would be fair that people who actually use the facility should be able to pay whether it's a membership or whatever. So and then I think Lynx is over at the Washington School, if if I'm correct. And I, you know, that may or may not be an issue if that site's not chosen, but I know that's a really popular excellent program for the children. And so I guess that would have to be relocated. And so that's a question I have. And that's pretty much it. And thank you all for listening and for communicating so clearly about everything.
Thank you, Arlene. That was perfectly timed. Is there anyone else online that would like to give comment? Folks online, is there anybody that wants to give comment? Yes.
I did see a comment, a chat pop up that was in response to someone else's comment. They basically were following your direction of if someone said something that that you agree with, then you don't have to make a comment.
Okay, I don't see anything in the chat.
I say, I see, I agree with everything Jessica just said.
I don't know why I'm not seeing that, but we need to. Oh, that's because it's directly to Mr. Gager. So that needs to be part of the public record chats, I think. Mr. Gager, I can't see those. Are you able to read them? So they're part of the record?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't.
So it looks like we've got two direct messages to me. The first is from Chase Rose, who just for the record, works for the foundation as a fundraising consultant of that organization there. And he says, Grant, one other detail in the blank grant relevant to Mr. Phelps's comments. If there is a significant change in scope or focus of the facility, they reserve the right to reduce or cancel their pledge. Assume he's referring to the the major donors, specifically the blanks Blank Foundation. And then Dennis Glick offered that he agrees with everything that Jessica Wilcox said. And those are the comments.
Thank you for reading those into the record. Oh, I haven't. Just one second, Stacy. Come to. Yes, I see a message from someone who already gave a comment. It's answering one of the questions that came up. So I'm going to save that for when we answer questions. But thank you to the members of the public, Stacy Jovic.
Stacy Jovic, or ten thousand eight. And I can't get my video to turn on for some reason, so I'll just ignore that. I just wanted to say that I think that preserving the Civic Center area for public use as a farmer's market, bands, concerts is a wonderful use of that area. And if the M Street area does not have any problems with the Superfund site, then I think that would be a good location that is accessible by a lot of different people. A lot of different modes of transportation. And if there were sidewalks that were actually added so that kids could walk there, ride their bikes on the sidewalks. I know that that street does not have sidewalks very far at all. So that's I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else online that would like to offer public comment? Nobody else online wants to offer comment? We do one last sweep of the room. Did we miss anybody? I don't think so. Online, did we miss anybody? Is there anyone that wants to offer comment? All right, so I'm going to close public comment on action item A, designation of preferred location for Community Wellness Center project. Thanks, everyone, for being so great your comments. And now, commission, we're going to move into the process that I already outlined. Mr. Gager will put up some sort of a tracking document, but we're going to go through the sites alphabetically just as they were presented. And actually, I'm sorry. Let me pause myself. Before we go through the sites, we're going to do another round of clarifying questions. Sorry, I missed that. I wrote some down. Would you all like me to start as I usually do and then let me know what I missed? Okay. I'm just going to go through in order of what I wrote down. Mr. Gager. There were a couple of questions about the status of M Street and whether or not it falls within the Superfund or Brownfield site. And do we have information on that?
Certainly we do and it occurs to me that in our public meetings and gatherings over the last few weeks, including down at the farmer's markets, I shared a map from the Department of Environmental Quality, which I recognize now that I have not brought a copy of. However, I think some commissioners are familiar with it. In twenty sixteen, when the Department of Environmental Quality measured the plume, it was had received approximately halfway through the M Street site. By twenty twenty, when it was measured, it had received itself all the way through the M Street site. And we are here three years later. My recent comments or conversations with the Department of Environmental Quality, they have indicated that they do not see any issues with with locating the facility there. So we we have have gotten the green light from from the Department of Environmental Quality, who was the state agency that issued the Record of Decision related to the Burlington Northern Livingston Shop Complex. That said, you know, I have spent a significant amount of time reading the Record of Decision related to the entire facility. And there are certainly, in addition to the the groundwater issues that have been recently publicized, there are other issues of note there related to metals in the soil and also related to a cinder pile that at one point was measured to contain some asbestos just south of the M Street site. That pile has been capped and all of the asbestos removed, it capped and remediated in the eyes of DEQ. And and so, yes, there are, by virtue of the railroad history in this town, there are some some issues that are present in in the area surrounding the yard. It is not limited to to any one location. But that said, we we have received, you know, notification from the state that that they do not have any issues with citing this project at that location. And nor to this point have we received any objections from from the railroad based on their knowledge of will bear me on the ground. I hope that helps.
Yeah.
Hey, Madam Chair, while you're on that specific site, the adjacent property, is is that where the old cement plant was? Soon that's fenced in, yeah.
I don't know the entire history of uses on that location. I do know, actually ironically, it was at one point used as a an employee recreation facility for the railroad and was taken down years.
Yeah, well, yeah, the last thing that was there was a cement plant. So I just wondered, is there any concerns with ground issues there with, you know, with that as well? You answered that as best you could.
So I, I will say to the
We just don't know yet.
No, you know, my my experience with concrete batch plants, because I do actually have relatively decent experience with those. Frequently those are located in neighborhoods, right, industrial areas and no known
Okay, thank you.
Right. The next question. There's a question about operating hours. I know that we're not to that point in the process, but could you elaborate on operating hours of a potential facility?
Yes, and we did some work on that in a recent survey, actually two recent surveys, one in May and one this month. And because facilities like this are designed to serve a wide range of the population. At this point, we've been evaluating operating hours that that range from six AM to approximately ten PM based on on community feedback we've received. The the majority of these appears like it would be between eight AM at noon and then again from from five PM to approximately seven PM. And so that is, you know, kind of our operating assumption against six AM to ten PM. And and we have pulled the community on 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 days of operation. Certainly, there's there's more interest in in the weekdays. And then Sunday is the the lowest day of of use of interest. And I will say, you know, if I may, Chair, there was a a comment about some of the the polling that has been done both recently and historically on this project. And and I would offer that while while the numbers may seem relatively small with, you know, anywhere from five to eight hundred respondents, depending on the the survey, given a a population in Park County of approximately eighteen thousand people, the the level of the margin of error on a survey of five hundred responses is is five percent. And so the the numbers are small, but but they are statistically significant from a polling standpoint.
Thank you. There was another question. This has been brought up multiple times, this idea of multiple facilities instead of just like multiple new facilities as opposed to one new facility. Could you please respond to the feasibility of that?
Yeah, absolutely. And so I I guess there are, there are a few points that are worth noting with regard to to that, you know, first and foremost, as I read a a comment from from Mr. Rose with the Bannock Group, who is the the foundation's fundraising consultant. You know, as as he noted, some of the larger gifts were given were committed predicated on on certain assumptions that what the facility would contain. And and from the beginning, as we saw, the facility has been discussed to contain a pool, a gymnasium and a walking track. And so by by splitting those uses out into different facilities, certainly, I think there would be a conversation with with at least one of the the major donors as to the feasibility of doing so. Secondarily, you know, recognizing that the impetus for this this project that that we find ourselves four years into is to replace the 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 facility, the Civic Center from nineteen thirty nine and the pool from nineteen forty nine. You know, if if we really do have to do something with those facilities from an operational standpoint and from a capital standpoint, there are cost savings associated with co-locating them in one facility. It is, you know, fewer exterior walls and and footings and other somewhat expensive construction parts, if it's all in one building. And then similarly, from an operation standpoint, you know, there are reductions in in the number of staff, you know, having having one front desk and and potentially, you know, consolidated maintenance facility, facility maintenance personnel. You know, it certainly is is a bit more efficient to locate it in one building.
Thank you. The next question is, do you know if it was located at the Civic Center site, if there would be impacts to the farmer's market?
Yeah, as I, as I stated earlier, you know, that that would really be determined in the the next phase of the project when when we have a location that we can work to design a building for and a related site layout for. But I, you know, I I have heard the comments and I think the rest of the project team that's that's present in person and online have have heard the comments about the the importance of the the farmer's market and preserving the Miles Park Ban Shelter.
Great. The next question is, what is the plan? What's the city's plan if this goes to the ballot and the voters vote down this project?
That's, that really is a fantastic question that was posed. And, you know, as I just stated, the the impetus for this project, you know, when I, when I joined the city, I was, you know, told by staff that the the current pool was was leaking, you know, tens of thousands of gallons a day of chlorinated water into a local waterway. And and so, you know, it it's very clear that that we do have aging facilities that could be replaced. And so if the voters do not approve of the project as we build it and present it to them in the next several months, I would offer that that we as a city still have a responsibility to evaluate our facilities and our future facilities. And I am hopeful that we would get the the outside capital support to assist with that. But very clearly, I think the pool But very clearly, I think the pool has has reached the end of its useful life. While you folks authorized, you know, upgrades to the pool, including patching and repairing it, painting in order to stem the flow of water. Unfortunately, conversations with the staff last week have determined that those repairs really were not successful. The the pool is leaking less water, but it is leaking increasingly more water as the summer goes on. So, you know, really, we, as a city, do need to determine what the future of that pool is. I don't think that pool has a future, let's be clear about that. So it's either we we replace it in ideally another location, just again, given its proximity to Fleishman Creek. Or, or, you know, the community decides to go without a pool altogether. When we look at the civic center facility, there there may be an opportunity to to do some repairs to that building. But, you know, I think anyone that's that's taken a tour of that facility, you know, certainly recognizes that there would be a lot of work to do to repair that facility. And so we may end up looking at at a fieldhouse or some more other type of facility, you know, to provide some more gymnasium space. So if it is not this project, I can assure you that I will be back with staff to determine a different path forward. And it will involve community consultation again of, you know, if we really do want to do a pool and a gymnasium, if the community is not supportive of this effort.
Okay. All right. Next on the list, I think we already answered that one. Okay, there's a question about a chart that you put up in your presentation. Are you able to pull that chart up again? I believe parentheses were mentioned. Could you just maybe restate what that data was?
Yes, just one second. Pull it up so we can share the screen for everyone.
Thank you.
Just to target my, oh, do you recall what the topic, subject matter was?
I think it was, please go ahead. Um, I think it was mostly around, was that the number of respondents? So I think it was in any of your poll questions. I think you actually hit on that just a little bit about the number of people polled and why those numbers are significant. But I think the question was number of people of respondents and polls is in parentheses. Is that what that meant?
Absolutely. So, yes, the the first number is, you know, we see here, the first number is the percent of respondents. And the second number is the the actual number of respondents. And off the top of my head, the this specific survey had 564 respondents. These numbers may not total 564 because some folks weren't presented this question based on how they may have answered earlier questions.
Thank you. The next question was, could or would a playground being included in a design for a future potential rec center?
Fantastic question. That is something that the team will work through as we come to, once we have a location, as we work on the building concept and the site plan to go with it. That said, as we have worked through the process, it does appear at this point as though outdoor recreation is recognized as a valuable asset to the facility. And so I believe it is the intent of the project team to have outdoor spaces, just recognizing the the use of these facilities and how they're used by the different groups. Outdoor space seems very important to the project.
Thank you. The next question, I don't know if you can answer, but I think I might be able to. It was about where Lynx happens. So Lynx is an after-school program. The comment I got from Sarah Boyle confirms what I was going to say, and it's probably because we're both parents of similarly aged kids. That Lynx currently happens in East Side, not in Washington School. So at least this summer. So hopefully that answers that question. Commissioners, did I miss any questions from the public that you can think of? Okay, so we can move to commissioner clarifying questions. If you've had more clarifying questions before we begin deliberations. Yes, Commissioner, please.
Regarding Katie Benal Park, proximity to the transfer station that the county is currently operating. That was an incinerator at one point. What are the chances of incinerator ever going back online? Just as a question, I can't remember if it's still intact or if it was taken apart.
Excellent question, Commissioner Noah. Having toured the site independently and previously as the county public works director, it's my understanding that in spite of popular request, that incinerator is not going back into operation. And the county currently hauls their their solid waste over to the Logan facility.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
No, that was the only one that I kind of missed it, clarify, you know, et cetera. What's going on with it? Because I know the incinerator was popular with people, I don't know why. I wouldn't want to live over there.
Right.
You know.
Yes.
Exactly. Why? Thank you.
Yes. Any questions right now?
I still have questions.
You have questions?
I'll go back to my original thing. There's a need for what we're doing, but I don't know the programs that they're running, you know, to know what kind of facility.
Okay.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, we can ask, we can ask him right now.
What I mean, I would like to have, there's going to be gentlemen that are involved that are now involved. And I'd like to get some questions to them. Do you understand what I mean?
Yeah, well, I think we can ask Mr. Gager, he probably knows.
You know, I would, I'd be happy to talk about the recreation programming, but it occurs to me that we probably have a larger expert in the room. I don't know if Maggie, you feel like talking a little bit about some of the programming that occurs at the current civic center and pool facility?
Yep.
If you don't mind, thank you, Maggie. You do not need, no, city staff and department heads do not need to sign in or state their name and address.
Great. 229 River Drive, Civic Center. That's where you can find me. So Mel, your question about existing programming and and the future of what the needs are.
There's a school involved. Is it of any value at all?
You know, I I don't want to speak for the school district, but in terms of the need of renovating two older buildings, I think I can't, I can't necessarily speak for the Shane Center. And all they've done for the renovation of their school facility, I imagine it's quite an undertaking to change classrooms and low ceiling heights of Washington School and the smaller scale gymnasium size to fit the bill and what we would need for recreational amenities. So I think there would be cost incurred to try to save a building versus.
The reason I'm getting it. A pool is needed. Basketball court.
Yep.
Those are the kind of things I'm trying to get a feel for, which I don't like getting out.
Sure.
As far as location goes, that's a depending on it. Well, the first thing is to rule out something that's not going to be of any value. So, but I'm not, I'm not hearing the kind of stuff that because I'm not involved with the program right now that I should do here. I'm trying to figure out if you want to expand it.
Yeah.
And so I'm looking for those kinds of.
Great. To give you a view of what was presented by by Mr. Gager regarding the indoor track. If you say indoor track, you might think track team and eight lane running events. Indoor track means to us opportunities to move throughout the day for all ages, age groups, and utilize that space. So by establishing a track space that's either around a gymnasium floor or elevated, it allows for multiple programming. If you have a track that's elevated above a gymnasium or a fieldhouse, then you're allowing space to continue to be programmed in the lower level. Or if you expand a track around what would be two basketball courts, you'd be able to program within those courts. And it it leads to the existing civic center. And why that comment came up in the original surveys is that we have the open walking hours at the civic center, but because of additional programming, those hours are limited to the public. So that's just a version of expansion with a greater scale of a of a building or or space. And ultimately, I mentioned to you and I've said it to others, multipurpose in my vision is the key. Right now, not in the water component, actually both are rectangles. But in the gymnasium, you walk in and you either have your wedding, your baby shower, you have your birthday party, you have a full court basketball game, you have the Boots and Buckles Ball for the rodeo association, but you can't steal that space and do anything else, but it's one use. So you can't run a basketball game and then have another space for a birthday party. And what we've seen is excessive demand, especially in the winter months. And then the need for the addressing the suicide concerns, the dark days of winter and the wind for us in Livingston. And so really, and that's, this is more of my dream speech, is just the multipurpose facility that we can have smaller breakable classrooms. This room could split into multiple spaces. You could have a fitness space adjacent to a birthday party space. And then the aquatic need is very high. Mr. Gager mentioned that we are just at the end of life with our pool.
So the reason I'm asking that, it's almost better if you start from scratch.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, most likely, I'm not the expert on renovations of historic facilities, though. So that would be, Washington School and Civic Center would be considered renovations if you wanted to preserve some of the structure and that would present challenges.
Because the reason I asked that, you know, if you took the Washington School, you'd have to knock the thing apart.
Right.
And that's, that does, that costs money.
Right.
So based on what I'm seeing right now and all this, it's better to have a designer mine and have a free go at it.
Yeah, yeah.
There's only one location with something standing there. That gets eliminated as far as I'm concerned. And how do you use the other ones is what we're talking about.
Right.
Okay, you help me out a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have any more questions?
Well, probably.
Okay. By strike, do you have any follow-up questions?
I have one. I'm I'm curious to know, just as we look at these different locations, would would active transportation routes or accessibility that would be included in the plant to scope work? When we look at these different locations?
It makes perfect sense. And I would say, as far as the city is concerned, accessibility of the sites, whatever site is selected, is critical. Whether accessibility improvements would be funded by the foundation or by the city is is a bit of a different question. You know, it, because it is is city streets, sidewalks, we do have the obligation to to install and maintain those in most instances. So, you know, like I said, I think that would be a bit of a conversation, you know, kind of depending on the type of improvements that are that are necessary.
Questions. I don't think I have any more questions. So we're ready to move into our deliberative process. Are you all ready or do you want to pause before? Do you need another break or are you ready to just dive in? Dive in? Okay, so now we're ready for your, whatever your tracking document looks like. Oh, there was a question, another question that popped up in the chat that went directly to me. The question, let me pull that up, was from Arlene, just reminding me that there was a question about extending Wind Rider service hours. Mr. Gager, I know that's not our jurisdiction, but can you give any insight to offer? Or I believe there might be a commissioner on that board that might be able to offer something as well.
You know, I certainly would defer to a board member. I guess before I do, my only comment would be, you know, while all the bus system is technically fixed route transit system, it doesn't operate on a fixed guideway. And so it is a system that is easier to modify, both the timing and, you know, direction of routes. Yeah, if I may.
Please, thank you.
As a member of the Wind Rider Board, I think that the Wind Rider route and schedule are adjusted regularly in response to community need. And the biggest constraint there is really just the cost of that service. Wind Rider has been really successful at getting grants to fund the service. And Arlene was actually talking about the fact that it's a free service. So the reason for that is is not because of of city taxes. The city, I think, committed is in this budget is committed to paying $5,000 to Wind Rider, which is like very paltry in the in the scheme of its costs. So I am getting long-winded, but the short answer is that the service changes somewhat regularly in response to community need. And if there were a new facility like this, that would be a significant change in community need. And so Wind Rider could adjust accordingly.
Thank you for that information. That's helpful. And I'm sorry that I forgot that follow-up question. So thank you in public, thank you, Arlene. Okay, so now we're going to move into the deliberative process. So we're just going to go through an alphabetical order as they were presented. And we'll go through benefits to selecting that site and also challenges. Let's start with benefits, just to make it simple, and we'll work through the list as best as we can. And this will be very short notes. It's not going to be, Mr. Gager's not going to be writing verbatim what we're saying. It'll just be enough to keep us on track. That we're real young, I don't want you to. Yeah, I don't, you don't have to like be like a court reporter giving us verbatim. Okay, so commissioners, we're going to start with the civic center. So benefits to this location or benefits to this site. We can just, I think we can just take turns as we do. Who would like to start? Yeah, Commissioner Lyons.
A a way I think I can synthesize some of the positive comments that I've heard for the civic center is kind of this vision of it being a centerpiece for Livingston. It's like an aesthetic and like focal centerpiece for the community. That that wasn't said directly by anyone, but I think that that kind of consolidates some of the sentiments that folks are saying in favor of the civic center.
Any other benefits that people see of that site?
Oh.
Do you want to keep going?
Sure. Yeah. I think the proximity to the the schools is something that that folks are saying they appreciate it as well.
I would clarify proximity to public schools because we have many, many children who are not in public schools. So proximity to it's third through 12th grade currently, public. And I'll throw in St. Mary's because it's right there, which is a private school, which I think is St. Mary's K through eight. Is it? I think so, yeah. Thank you. So proximity to three through 12, public, and then St. Mary's.
And I'll share one other positive that I heard from public input, which is the other recreation uses are on the site. So complimentary to other recreational uses.
Any other positives?
Well, just adding to the students and stuff like that. Our kids are down there nine months out of the year going to school. You know, essentially, not all, you know, we do have a education and my sort of schools throughout. But the vast majority of the students are in that area nine months out of the year. And it's accessible, meaning walkable from the schools and stuff like that. We are lacking some sidewalks, obviously, but not to the extent that we are on some other, you know, other sites that we are looking at. I think Tori summed up pretty good. Most of my talking points in a way, so, yeah, thank you.
I think there'll be a lot of overlap in the week. Yeah, so, any other pluses to this?
We're still working out a process on my own. We need more information.
Yeah, we're just going to keep, we're going to keep going through plus, minus, plus, minus each site. Yeah, as we process together, is there anything else you would add, by Sherif?
I would just say I I've heard that it's close to the senior center, that's not, it's not all, not where all of our seniors live. Because I know that there's other senior facilities in the area, but it's close to the downtown senior center.
Okay. Yeah, all right, nothing else to add there? So we'll move to challenges with the Civic Center. Who would like to begin here? Commissioner Lyons, thanks for starting us off.
I'll just be first on the Civic Center. I think the challenges are many in number. I've heard site of old dump as a challenge. I have heard very resoundingly fears of flooding and impact to the river. I also heard concerns regarding impact on the wildlife that utilizes the wetlands around that area. I also have concerns about impacts on the existing uses, just kind of broadly of that area. I think it sounds like it's a pretty well-loved spot, it certainly is to me. And I think and then the importance of or reverence for the existing historic building. And I think costs associated with demolishing or incorporating that would could kind of go into into that point, but. And then I guess I'll finally say, because we're going to probably bring it up, the other three traffic concerns. They're they're very different in this location, but I did hear a few folks worried about traffic there, so. And our, listen, for for my clarity, are we talking about our personal perspectives? As benefits and positives, are we, are we thinking about?
I think I think both are accurate, and then we'll come back to after we get through just the more pluses and minuses as we see them and as we've heard them.
What we'll bring.
Yeah, after all, after we get through all four, then we'll come back to like, what's your overall sort of like gut check? Or your generative thoughts around this, so those two sort of categories, we'll do at the very end.
I'm going to add my first personal contribution to the Civic Center. Analysis, which is that the type of development and growth that we have expressly tried to avoid through the growth policy process. And the thing that comes to mind was there was a, there was a discussion of of development on the old Heart K Ranch a few years ago, and part of the concerns that I heard, I wasn't part of the commission at that point, but part of the concerns that I heard when that came to the commission was the impacts on the ecosystem around the river. If the city were to invest or to spend, I guess, donors $25 million on new, a new building on the river, the city would be in a in a tricky spot if if a similar development were to come come around again. And so I think that that setting that precedent really kind of hamstrings our ability to consider impacts on on the ecosystem of the river in the future. I'll yield there, thank you.
Who would like to go next?
I guess I'm kind of unsure of our procedure here, are we?
So now we're going.
Going, going in.
So first we did yellow hat, now we're doing a black hat.
Yeah.
So first we did pluses, now we're doing, so we're going to do the pluses for a site, and then we're going to do the challenges for a site, then we're going to go to the next.
Then when, when do we get into the personal?
You can name personal pluses and negatives now. And then at the very end, after we talk about all four, just making our lists, then that's when we'll come back and I'll be like, how do you feel, Quentin? Like, where are you at with these five?
Okay.
And we'll, and the same with like, maybe you have like, maybe there's like new ideas generated in the process.
Okay, so I I the only thing I he brought up, you know, obviously all the the concept a lot of people have expressed, but things that can be dealt with. You know, other thing is, I don't know if you kind of mentioned it, but you know, the loss of a building, a WPA building, which is historic, and I do recognize that. But with that in mind, that loss, we are gaining something much more beneficial. And I could see repurposing parts of the Civic Center using the trusses for an open air, you know, with the roof, open air, kind of a market or something like that. So it wouldn't be a total loss or with regards to that. The other thing is we have to keep the park in the fan shell, in my opinion. As is, I wouldn't want to encroach on that anymore than what with the the footprint is right now. That's a such a part of our problem here, I mean, I love the farmers market fan shell. It's a hub of that activity down there, the whole thing. Regarding transportation, I mean, traffic and stuff, sure, and you know, obviously it will increase, but it's busy now. And we do have swimming pool down there, and we do have activities going on at Civic Center all the time, so. I guess I'm ran away, I'll yield.
Can we add a, can we add a plus from what he said about potential redevelopment?
Or re-purposed, yeah.
That's a better word, thank you, it's often that. And I think it's okay if we're we're remembering things, because this is a process, okay. Anybody else want to add to this list for the Civic Center?
I think we have it in here, but I mean, I just, I think that building in that area goes against the growth policy. I think that we have huge climate change issues, and the idea of building next to the river is on is not responsible. I think as a city, we need to set a precedent. And as as Commissioner Lyons talked about, and we definitely setting the wrong precedent. The idea that that area would need to be filled in and filled into a height so that it wouldn't flood would completely change the landscape of that entire area. I think the height in which that building would have to be built up. And you look at a building that's sitting this high, and Miles Park is here, and what what's that going to look like? I think it will change the entire landscape of Sacagawea Park and that area if we don't lose Miles Park. Potentially could because of the size of the of the facility. I also have.
So maybe maybe putting something about, like, it's a distinctly different built environment than the exit, the current built environment, is that?
Yeah. And I would also say that we could incur some pretty large insurance impacts if that area flooded with a new building, I think. That would affect the city and all of our rates for insurance with that one claim. And probably would affect everyone else's claims in this city as well. And I'm saying that because I sold a piece of property in Florida, and I'm dealing with what that looks like. And I live nowhere near a body of water. So that is an issue.
Okay, anything else to add?
No.
I have a few that I'll add. So as far as the growth policy, it does conflict with the governor's Yellowstone task force. There's specifically something in there about not building public facilities specifically in that space. I would add another thing that I've heard people say, using my own words, is a change in community character for that part of town. Which is one of our growth policy goals right now, is working on community character. I would add, I know folks have said that that building doesn't flood. I was in there last week and there's water in the basement last week, so I would say that there's many ways to think about a flood. Water does penetrate the basement of the Civic Center currently, which is a concern. So I think it's not just flooding, it's the fact that the water table is so high, so we're always going to be battling the water table. That's a different issue in my mind than a flood. I would say, so I'd put as a challenge, there's always going to be a high water table and will always be, you know, city versus underground river, if we have things sunk into the ground like swimming pools. Cost of engineering is going to be higher for this facility to mitigate potential floods. I think you already covered the insurances on my mind. Oh, the cost of repair, so when the facility would flood, the cost of repair would be on taxpayers. Which concerns me, especially for a building of this cost, that'll be expensive repairs when the day would come. Even a very well-built structure in time will be not a brand-new structure, and so, you know, 15, 20 years, it'd be different scenario than it would be on year one. I think that's what I have to add to the minuses. Anything else that you can think of?
I'm just surprised that Civic Center basement is usable.
Yeah.
It's built.
I actually have another one that I forgot. Right now, that is our designated evacuation site in the city. And so when people were evacuated last year, we had no public facility for them to go to. The hospital was evacuated, the schools were in the flood, the the majority of the public schools were in the flood plain. And then our one city facility that contained people was also evacuated. My child was one of the people evacuated, who was at a day camp. So we could not use it if there were, or when there's another flood, if it were there, we would once again find ourselves in a situation where we're evacuating people, and they would have nowhere to go except for the hotel if they could afford it. Okay. So are we done with this site for now? All right, so next is Katy Bonnell Park. So this is the, also the one on North M Street. So Commissioner Lyons went first last time on pluses, did you want, should we have someone else go on pluses this time? Give him a break. Who would like to start with pluses for the North M Street Park, the Katy Bonnell Park? Does any, does anybody have anything good that they want to say about that location, things they heard?
Yeah, I'll.
Do you want to start?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
We own the property. Not much in the way of demolition or anything like that. Basically, we'll get a bare piece of ground to start with. And location is not a bad location regarding, you know, presence and stuff like that, the main thoroughfare that is regularly serviced by Wind Rider and that's all I can come up with at this time.
I think that because we know the information that that Mr. Gager got from DEQ, I think that this is a really great use of a brownfield redevelopment. I think this is an excellent location or something where people aren't potentially like living every day, but are going to use since it's every development. That area is the area in which we expect the city to grow. And so that, I think, is it's sitting in a good area of growth. I think that there is, there there are positives to accessing that location because of its proximity between the B Street underpass and Bennett Street. Gets people away from Fifth Street, the Fifth Street crossing. I think it would be nice to have some amenities on the north side, I think, just to have a north side amenity. That location does qualify for the new tax, the new market tax credits.
Okay. Think you caught everything that I would, sorry, but to be, no, 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 it's not, sorry, it's great, but well, I think. Overlapping Commissioner Lyons, is there anything that you can think of either that hasn't been said for benefits?
Yes, so we have, we've identified really two I'm for lack of a better term right now, I'm going to say like communities of concern as constituents to to give extra care for the location of of the site, and it's mainly thus far been seniors and children. But another one that hasn't come up yet or not directly is our low-income population. And I think that the proximity that this location has the the best accessibility for our low-income population. I mean, you could argue that there's, well, I mean, the map demonstrates there's also low-income population on Southeast Side. So the Civic Center would be, could could qualify here as well, but I mean, I think that, I think that Grant covered it with the proximity to low-income. And I appreciate all of my fellow commissioners' comments thus far that have captured the positives that I have heard and thought myself.
Okay.
Actually, I just thought.
Great.
My assessment of public input from this meeting, from all of the comments that we've gotten be electronically and from my time at the engagement with the community at the at the farmers market. The, this is the site that has the strongest, what the the most frequent positive feedback from the community. There's, there has been a lot of positive feedback for the Civic Center as well. But if if you were to balance positive feedback with negative feedback and do the net positive feedback, the the Katy Bonnell location has the most, so maybe most net positive feedback.
I would say for me, it's top two net positive. There's one other site, I would agree that we got a lot of positive feedback on that second market day, on the first market day. On the first market day, um, I would say there was another site that people were speaking up very positively, but for me, this is the top two from the public. The other one is one we haven't talked about yet. Yeah, so how rephrase that, like, I would say one of the top net.
I mean, it could just, it could just be net positive feedback because that, that doesn't exclude whatever.
Right, because the civic center got positive feedback, but there was, you'd say net negative.
I'm not quite, but close, no.
Uh, for me on the, yeah. I can't repeat the things in public that I've heard people say at Farmers Market to the city about that site. Um. Okay, so now we're to the challenges with the M Street Katie Bonnell Park. Who would like to go first for this one?
I will.
Okay.
I'm still concerned about the, the ground and. What level of toxins may still be in the ground once we start digging. The plume may have receded, but what's left behind, um, parts heavy metals and stuff like that. Um, blah, blah, blah. Okay, we went over the incinerator, that, that's gone. We are lacking. Um, accessibility with regards to sidewalks, mainly pedestrians, being pedestrian-friendly. Both sides of Bennett Street. Answered Smith. Um, batch plant question. That's all I have.
Anybody else? I can always take a turn too. Um, I would add uh, active transportation accessibility too. That's a feedback that I've gotten a lot is that Bennett Street crossing is very. Dangerous for people walking or bicycling. Edge of town with the highway speeds coming in over a little bit of a grade there. Um, gentrification is something that was brought up as a potential negative. There's quite a few um, mobile home. Communities that live in that part of town and people are worried how this could. Um, push out working-class people from that neighborhood if there was something like this put in the neighborhood. See. Think that's already covered. Um, next to the county transfer station, I think is a negative. That is immediately adjacent to it. Everything else I got from a DEQ report that I'm going to share, it's a list. Some of the groundwater or the ground surface contamination adjacent, as far as I can tell, this is in the super fund. Original mapping of the super fund, yes, the plume has changed, but the heavy metals remain. The data that I read indicate that there's at least in some places, um, three thousand seventy parts per million lead. I'm not sure where on-site that is, but somewhere, somewhere in that super fund site. Um, I'm concerned about airborne heavy metals. Unfortunately, I have personal experience with that and it's not something to be taken lightly, that heavy metals can and do move around the environment and we don't have that data. On how it is moving, as far as I can tell, we don't have the data. If it's out there, I haven't found it yet. On how that's moving around our community and the sites adjacent to it. So I would put um. Something about adjacent to. Potential. Airborne or mobilized heavy metals. Um, I think there's an unknown cost to remediating that site. If we start doing work there and it turns out it is contaminated, unfortunately, I have experience with that as well. It's not inexpensive. Um, and the greatest risk often with heavy metals in the soil is when you start moving them around and they become airborne. There is a cost associated with remediating. Potentially contaminated soil and we don't have that information, I don't think, yet. Uh, I also read former city manager Steve Bulmar's comments. From back in the day when this consent decree was being worked out and he, his recommendation on behalf of the city of Livingston was that cinder pile or the asbestos pile, as people are calling it, be. Moved out of town and I won't get this verbatim, but the comment basically said something like. Because of, it had to do with the winds in Livingston. Which things are capped, but the wind speeds on average then are similar to what you would expect now. And he made some comment that as long as that's in the city of Livingston, it's going to be a problem for the people who live here. And so as far as I can tell, that recommendation has never been followed up from that city manager. Is it four city, five city managers back? So some sort of like. I don't know, I take that comment seriously that the city manager at the time wanted that done and there hasn't been any follow-up or conversation as far as I can tell between. The powers that be with the city to minimize risk to the community by considering an alternative location. I don't know how you want to put that in there, but. It's different than metals.
Uh, yeah, perhaps I, is it more comfortable if I just noted as a cinder pile?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you. Um. I think. I think that's uh, everything is covered. Talk about transportation. Oh, one thing that I think is a plus that I forgot to say is I do like that it's on a major street on the north side. So that would be on the top box. Like it's um, that street that it's on is a nice major sort of street on the north side. Did you say that? Is it on there?
I don't forget.
I'm sorry.
But no, with, with regards to Wind Rider, it's a major thoroughfare and it does get followed for the winner.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry that I missed that. Okay. I, can you think of anything else for the site? Are we ready to? Keep going.
I've got one more that may or may not be novel to the positive list, which is the. We talked, I think there's something, I'm struggling to read it now, but proximity to growth potential. When you look at the future land use map in Livingston and the application of. Of mixed-use zoning, which was um. An indicator from uh, those participants in the growth policy of areas of potential growth. And so I would say, I would add. Alignment with the future land use map in Livingston. As a positive. Yes.
Yeah.
We're halfway through and it's pushing ten o'clock. Are you guys, okay, it was just like a five-minute break, so we don't have to. Just like a quick five minutes. Will somebody make a motion for a five-minute break?
I moved to take a five-minute break.
Second.
Motion by Schwartz. Second by Kiel. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll be back in five minutes. We just need to give our brains to rest and our bodies. Alright, so. We're going to pick up where we left off. We're moving on now to talk about the north side soccer park location. And so we'll have that spreadsheet up in just a minute. So. I'm sure Kiel, do you want to begin this one?
I can try. Yeah, um, so I guess positives would be, which are kind of already on this. Um, that land is owned by the city. There would be no demolition costs, I guess. And its proximity to other. Recreation facilities.
Okay. Um, anything else about north side that people like?
Nice view.
Great view. Yeah, it does have a great view, actually. That actually was something that came up at the table at one of the farmers markets. Is that it, the blue shed there is pretty ideal. Yeah. Yeah. Anything else? Yeah, Commissioner Lyons.
I think it. It's maybe the location that's. By the, the map we saw of percentage of households with children. That location, I think, was maybe like in the highest of, on that factor. So, location to households of. Proximity to households with children.
Okay.
Which we identified as one of the communities of concern that we've been thinking about.
Yeah. Alright, so should we move to challenges? Uh, Commissioner Schwartz.
I think, I think it's too small. No. For what we're trying to accomplish, you know, I guess it kind of does. To, to me, if, if it doesn't, it feels. It's not big enough.
I wonder if the shape of it makes it feel that way.
Well, I guess, well, that, you know, trying to sit around there, but.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's all I have for the negative at this.
Uh, Commissioner Lyons?
I would just really like to offer a pun.
A pun?
Yeah, it's the furthest afield.
Not like that, though.
Can you please put furthest to field?
But, you know, that relates to access by pretty much all measure that we've, we've been talking about. There isn't existing transit service, but there, as we, as I said, there, that's not um, a permanent situation necessarily. There isn't sidewalks, the road's not paved. And you can only really get to it directly from the south. And so just accessibility, that's probably the most accessibility challenge of all the locations.
The elevation of it too makes it difficult, like.
To bike to.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, for people with very small children that maybe have to like, or. Or people um, that are older also. I feel like, or anybody that just has a hard time biking, but the weight, the going up, up, up on the way home, I'd be fine.
People in wheelchairs.
Yeah, people in wheelchairs. Yeah, thank you.
Can I add another?
Yeah.
So for the, the Katie Bonnell one, I mentioned the inverse where it's. If you look at the future land use map or a zoning map, that is in a location that is identified for growth. This is. This would mirror a trend. Of growth to the northwest that we have heard through the growth policy that folks are not particularly in favor of. It's, it's on really the edge of the built part of town. And by intensifying uses at the edge, that facilitates an expansion.
Yeah.
I don't really know how to put that in a bullet.
I think he just said. I think it, the intent seems.
Yeah, that's great.
I would add um, one thing that I've heard, uh, it's the windiest site, so that is definitely something to consider for programming. It could present any challenges if there's just higher wind speeds more frequently outside. Yeah, I thought it was interesting too. Another thing that I've heard is that it's, you have to go through. Like it's a requirement to go through a great distance of residential area before you get to it, so it could sort of change the dynamics of one street. Or a series of streets that connect from more centrally located part of town to there. I'm not sure how to put that in words, but it um.
Residential pass-through.
Yeah, or may, or could, uh, one more highly affect the neighborhood and perhaps others.
Yeah. Like some of the others, we talked about how it's on a major road on. There's no like major road that's a thoroughfare for the north side right there, so it sort of changes one of the roads and makes it. Potentially. Uh, that's a thing that um, I remember came up when we talked previously about crossings and things like that too, that um, the way that people's streets change really mattered to them and so just being mindful of that. Yeah, local past few roadways, that's great.
It's just an awkward location to me. Sorry.
It's okay, it's like, yeah, after ten o'clock and we're going to the bus weekend. So um, you said awkward location?
Yeah, just in general.
In some ways, it's the most um. Different location, like it's the most. I don't know how to.
Oh, well, you know, we keep talking about proximity to public schools. Uh, of, of, of operating public schools, it's the furthest.
Yeah, and private schools probably as well.
For this from all schools.
I think maybe for locations, it's like the most different of all the, it's like the biggest outlier location-wise. In terms of all the things we think about. Can we think of anything else for this or should we move on?
Move on.
Okay, Washington School. Mel, what do you like about Washington School? You're going to start this one for us.
What do you think the pluses of the Washington School location are?
Washington School?
Yeah, what do you like? What's the positive?
I don't, I don't think that, that, I don't think so.
You don't think it's like, no positives for Washington.
There's no problems, but it's the question is whether um. This way, I answer these questions at the beginning or what, you know, how they, how they see it as a fit. You know, with, with the operations they're going to have, they know what the building is. Uh, is it a, that is, that you will own.
So that would be kind of like what um. Commissioner Schwartz was talking about repurposing could be a positive if we could repurpose the building. That's what you would like to see.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Okay.
Because I assume they have a swimming pool and all sorts of things. And there's the. The fact that it exists. Can it, can what, what is there to utilize for the best, best advantage as well?
Okay, so. And it sounds like if that site were selective. That's a conversation that would come next. Can you um, shed some light on that for Commissioner Friedman?
Um, yeah, you know, I, I guess I would start by going back and pointing out that the architect team. Has said that the facility that we are seeking to build.
has said that the facility that we are seeking to build that, you know, forty to forty-five thousand square feet and a hundred and fifty parking spaces can fit on any of the sites. My conversations with the district, you know, clearly they are, they're closing the the, the school, you know, for operational reasons and have started to remove some equipment from the school earlier this week, and so, you know, it's, it's my understanding based on their condition assessment that they don't have the intention to use that school in the foreseeable future, if that clarifies.
So, did you hear what Mr. Gager said earlier, that there are some issues with the structure?
Of the
Yeah.
Okay.
That's one of the, that's one of the concerns, is the cost to to keep that school up could be high, and so that, that's a conversation that would have to happen, and that's and that's, and that's true whether the school district owns it or anyone else owns it.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, and so in terms of the location, is there anything you like about the location? Do you like the location for the wellness center?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, cause they have numbers in the paper of cost of construction.
Right.
And that's, that's part one, part two is
Yeah, it's okay, yeah, that's okay, cause we can keep moving through.
Yeah.
I just wanted to give you a chance to go first, too.
Yeah. Yeah, cause I yeah, I was looking for a conversation from them, you know, what's the next step? And to go from there.
Yeah.
Based on that, there's only really two locations.
Well, so let's get through this list then, and then we can come back to that.
Yeah.
Okay. So do you have other things that you folks like about the Washington School location? When, I mean, Commissioner Schwartz?
He's kind, yeah, did we cover location?
We didn't cover Washington School yet. We just have the one point. So other benefits to that location? I know it's getting late, who wants to go first for this one?
Yeah.
It's on a main thoroughfare, okay?
Yeah.
There's existing sidewalks. I just jumped in, my apologies.
It's, you know, I, we can give each other a lot of grace at this hour.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, I agree with that, if you are.
I am.
Go ahead.
You know, I gave, I gave Katie Bonnell credit for being in a in a place identified basically based on land, on land use designation, and I, I think that our mixed-use zoning goes that far west. Mr. Gager, are you, are you aware?
So we have some neighborhood commercial that is immediately north of the site, and then we have some also
Okay. I believe in the future land use map, we did identify kind of that, like near north side area maybe even that far west as mixed-use, so if, if, if it, if it falls within that or it doesn't it's like close to, it's at least close to an area we've identified through the growth policy as an area for potential
There's some neighborhood commercial over on that side of town, too.
I'm, I'm thinking about, I'm really thinking about the future land use map, the existing zoning.
Gotcha. Yeah, I think that there is, though, like neighborhood, in that area, I remember that from the growth policy.
Is there anything else you wanted to add?
I bet Wind Rider goes right by there.
I, I think this is easily the most central location in terms of thinking about population density based on the family map. Of the four options, this seems to be the most central. I think I think about the strain on the school board right now, and the strain on our public school system, and closing a facility and the cost that it would, I think about the amount of money it's gonna cost the school district to keep a closed facility safe for the neighborhood, so they'll be spending money on the building even if it's closed, and I wonder honestly, like I wonder, I think, cause the same taxpayers that are paying into that school are the same people that live here in our community, the same city taxpayers, so I wonder if there's some net benefit to the community overall between a city, school agreement for this property, where it could be a benefit to the city but also a benefit for the school district? So there's not a one block of city, of land within the middle of an existing neighborhood that sits unused and undeveloped. I'm concerned about how long that sits there empty and what that, what the impacts are to that neighborhood, and also the cost to the school district, so I wonder if there's some benefit to the school district by entering into a conversation with the city, if it could be a net benefit partnership? Yeah, I guess it's like potentially a net benefit partnership, you know, we've had the school folks from the school come to previous meetings and they really want, they clearly really want this to benefit them, so I think there's some way that this potentially could benefit the school district beyond a place where kids go, it could potentially monetarily benefit them by them not having money going into an empty building. Um
That sounds right.
Does that sound right? Yeah, and I, you know, I don't know, Commissioner Schwartz, you probably have a good historic knowledge of how many schools have sat empty for how much time in the city of Livingston, but I'm guessing they sit empty for a while before they enter their next phase.
That one has, you know, it's been, you know, empty and then repurposed one when we did the kindergarten and Y2K. So I can't remember how long was in service when I first moved here thirty years ago.
But I mean, like, how long was the school on Fifth and Calendar empty? How long was the school on Lincoln?
Oh, that, that I don't know.
But I mean, a lot of these schools probably were empty for a while.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so that's a pretty
Especially the West Side School, yeah.
It's like a pretty big piece of property to just be sitting empty in the middle of a neighborhood, and so that is a
And has to be maintained.
Yes, and like, there's some amount of, yeah, just the responsibility and risk with having an empty building in the middle of a
Well, and, and the thing is, I, I've got, got the second hand, but approximately one million dollars for the needed repairs on the Washington School.
Okay.
The roof certainly needs to be replaced and stuff like that, but in that same respect, that is an historic building, too, would qualify being a mid-century building built in nineteen fifty-three or four, and so like that. So, um I guess I'm getting into the negatives now.
I mean, Commissioner Freeman put something about potential for reuse.
Yeah, but it would, you know, either the school has to put a million dollars into it to reuse it, or we do. And I don't, you know, the facility is not gonna work there if we keep the building, unfortunately. But
Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, so I think some of our kind of like difficult to capture in these lists points that have been made have to do with the, the stat, the, the status quo of the site. So by status quo, I mean like what's happening now, and the continuation of what's happening now. And so, I actually think value or cost of, of the status quo would be kind of like a help, helpful way to conceptualize some of the stuff that's been hard to, to categorize. Here, what I'm hearing from you, Chair Newt, is there's a cost of status quo, a cost of the, the building continuing as it is unused, so like costly status quo is how I would kind of capture what you're saying, what you're saying. And, but that, and that makes me think kind of retrospectively about the other ones of value or cost of status quo, so if it's appropriate I'd like to maybe offer those.
Thanks.
So, for this, for the Civic Center, I heard mostly as a positive value of, of status quo, but you know what? I think, to be fair, we can put in so I guess a negative for the development of the Civic Center would be the value of status quo. But I think in the positive for that one, to be fair, we did hear that the Civic Center building itself, and kind of to, to keep that same perspective that you're applying to the Washington School the cost of maintaining and hold, or not maintaining or whatever, I think that would apply to the Civic Center and the pool site as well. So, there's a value of status quo there, and there's a, there's a cost of status quo there. For Katie Bonnell you could, you could say both, but what I've only heard from the public is the actually, I haven't, I haven't heard really any comments about the status quo on the Katie Bonnell, on the north side. There's, I haven't heard that either, so really the, the ones that have like, that have elicited the most attention of, of what, what happens if nothing happens there would be Washington School and the Civic Center.
Yeah. Very stupid, yeah.
He talks like a planner. No, that's great. Anything else about Washington School? Let's see, oh, somebody somebody said something to me about Washington School, it's the only site that has road access on every side. They said it is a plus. They said it is a plus.
Yeah, sidewalks.
And, I mean, there's, there's some sidewalks that are not in place, cause I had to walk, we walked our youngest there, but, um so there, there are places without sidewalks on that part of town, but it's probably, I would imagine, a little bit less than some of the other sites.
Right. More developed, I mean, it's more developed, yeah.
Yeah, there might be a better city infrastructure there.
Yeah.
And to me, that also, that brand-new city infrastructure is a huge plus. Do you remember just a couple years ago, we voted and they put in new is it new waters? It was new sewer, they upgraded the sewer, so that's a huge plus to me, is there's like brand-new infrastructure right to that site? Cause that's expensive and it's brand-new. Um, what else for plus? I think it's the can you put something in that encapsulates, encapsulates what you were saying about sidewalks, and it's not perfect, but it probably has the best sidewalk or pedestrian access.
There's pedestrian and bike accessibility.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, I missed it.
Yeah, Tori did bring that up.
Yes, thank you. Um, oh, another plus that I've heard is that it's right next to the Fifth Street Crossing. So like, you can cross the tracks and you're right there, is the idea, like you don't have to go deep into another part of town, it's really close to the Park Street.
It's right back to central location, yeah.
Right, yeah, I guess that's anything else for pluses for Washington?
Chair Newt.
Yes.
Grant, for Washington School the, the positive is the cost of status quo, and then for, for Civic Center, then the challenge is value of status quo. Does that make sense?
Absolutely does. If I may also, just not to break the flow, you know, I, I noticed we have things like new market tax credit eligible on Katie Bonnell.
Right.
And, and then also Civic Center is also a city loan, so I think I'd like to add those benefits there, just sphere of equity.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for doing that. That was like our very first, that was our first rectangle, so we weren't in the flow yet. All right, so, anything else on Washington benefits of site?
Pretty much covered it. Pretty good.
I mean I think, I'm just trying to go back and read, I think that one is a pretty good one with proximity to households with kids, too, and sphere of equity. So similar to the north side location if I remember in the map. Okay, are we ready to move to challenges with Washington School? All right, who would like to go first?
I'll go.
Okay.
Um it's not eligible for tax credits? To me, that's a huge one. Um demolition cost? Fifth Street Crossing still is not satisfactory, it's still, it needs work. Losing a potential school.
Yes.
You know, once it's gone, it's gone, you know? It's like for a school, if that one used again or having land to build in the school.
We would have to acquire that property.
Right, we have to acquire that property, yeah, that's my next one, and then that's it. That I have. No, no, thank you. I yield to you.
I think of all my, one of my negatives to this is, I think that there is potential better use of this property than the wellness center. I think this is an excellent place for housing, or
Oh, then the wellness, oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that the Washington, and not that we get to choose, because we don't own this property, but I think that that is an excellent location for housing. Um, and so I, that's mine, I think that's a downfall for me.
Yeah, that was
There's better use of the property.
You know, that brings me to a positive for the site, I think that it's not very often that we get the opportunity to put a public facility in an existing residential neighborhood. I think it, it's potentially a rare opportunity to put a public, city public facility in an existing neighborhood when normally land wouldn't be available.
Right.
So I'd add that into the top column.
And I think you have to add that to Katie Bonnell, too.
Katie Bonnell is in an existing neighborhood. Katie Bonnell is surrounded by
Across the street would disagree.
Well, I mean, if this is surrounded on three sides, by residential and one side by industrial, and Katie Bonnell is surrounded on three sides by industrial and one side by residential, so that's what I'm thinking of. It's like the amount of residential around it. You can disagree with me, that's okay. I guess.
Certainly, that
Yeah, yeah, you can. Thank you for adding that.
Yeah, and, and if I may, you know, I'll add to the Civic Center, we, we did just do a fairly large sewer upgrade there, you know, last year, so
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, thank you. Anything else on the challenges row for the Washington School?
You, you also said that you, there was another property that had a net positive reviews.
Oh, this was the other property that I think had net positive reviews from the people that I heard from. So it was the Katie Bonnell and the Washington School that I heard the most positive reviews. So it was the Katie Von L and the Washington School that I heard the most positive reviews from.
I'd agree with that. At least from what I read.
You know, honestly, the most negatives I've heard about Washington School were concerns about the school district. Like there are comments that we can't, like it's not our jurisdiction to think about how the school district employs teachers or whatever the issue is. It was like way outside of our lane. So my hope is we can somehow get those comments to the school board, but most of the things that people were concerned about around Washington School didn't actually have to do necessarily with. Yeah, it was more like, more like comments for the school board than on comments about the location for Wellness Center. So. And I, and I understand the confusion. It's like I'm glad people share the comments, but it was just my thing that we make decisions on. So. Okay. Are we ready to move to our next phase?
Yep.
Okay. So now we have all this information. We're going to move to, um, this is like the gut check portion of the program or also any new ideas maybe that are popping up in your mind as we think about each site. So I suggest we just go through them one at a time again as a commission. Does that work for you all?
Sure.
Okay. So Civic Center. What's your, your overall likes or feeling response to Civic Center? Commissioner Lyons.
I see the location and development of Wellness Center as the city putting its money where its mouth is with respect to our intentions of growth and, and change in the city. I think that, uh, putting the Wellness Center in a floodplain right up against the river is us saying that that is acceptable development in Livingston. I think that that resoundingly goes against what we've heard. Um, and through the growth policy process and, and onward. Um, and so investing donated dollars and then, and then city tax or, um, tax revenue to that kind of to something that, that goes so starkly in contrast to, um, to the growth policy, uh, is irresponsible in, in, in my perspective. I'll yield there.
Thank you. Other commissioners? This is just on the Civic Center.
Yeah.
What are your thoughts on Civic Center site?
I, I still personally like it as a site for its location to the schools. With regards to flooding, um, we have ways to engineer that. They, they did it with the. With the middle school. When they built that, um, perhaps that doesn't meet the standards today, but, um, when we own the property. If we don't utilize that site, we still have to maintain the Civic Center to, at what cost and, um, repairs are going to be needed sooner than later, later on that. But I, I only like it, um, if we maintain Miles Park or the Banjo area as well. To me, that's important. And the baseball fields and, and obviously the skate park. Now they're not going to go away.
Okay.
And, uh, tax credits available there. Yeah. About four million dollars potential um, going to this project, which would go a long way to renovating that site and building it up.
Do you like Civic Center site?
According to this, it would be awful iffy.
Iffy.
Yeah, which is, we don't need that. So we had four locations. We're done.
We're just talking about it one at a time right now. So we're just saying.
That's all we got is one to talk about. So.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we have to do an awful lot of, uh, work to get their properties up to date. And then I don't think it'd be worth it. It's still too many, too many question mark.
Okay.
And the other, there's only at least two, two parks.
We're going to get to the parks later. Yeah.
So things are just disintegrating very quickly.
Hopefully not before the end of this meeting.
Hopefully not. Yeah. Um, I think that as a city, we need to set an example. Um, and so sort of playing off, uh, Commissioner Lyons, what you said, and to set an example means that we are not building a multimillion dollar building in a floodplain. The idea that we would fill that area with, I think, Grant and I had a conversation about what some of that engineering might look like, that it would have to be filled that eight feet full of fill before building started. And then the building starts and then you look at, you know, you want, we want to keep Miles Park in the ban shell. And what does that look like with eight feet of fill? And then there's the park over here and the skate park over here. And then we're going to put a non-permeable surface of a giant parking lot right next to the river. And what does that do for the river and the way that floods? We're going to create horrible issues. We know that new floodplain maps are coming out and they'll be out in the next couple of years. I think that's going to be a very, very rude awakening for a lot of people in this community. And the idea that we as the city would put a building there is just, it's not okay. I, I, this is a, I mean, I'll be perfectly honest and straightforward. This is a big bad no for me.
Okay. My turn? I would, um, I agree with Commissioners Lyons and Friedman and Kale. The one thing that I would add is, um, the first thing we engineer is a building and then the next thing that has to be engineered is the river. So when expensive infrastructure goes next to a river, often the next thing we see communities do is build bigger, taller, longer levees. And I know enough about rivers and I'm not a water expert, but I know enough about rivers and levees to know that when we build those up, there's pretty major impacts to people downstream and upstream. So we sort of, um, we potentially would be increasing the risk not only to the people who live within the city of Livingston by putting something right next to the river, but we're spreading out that risk to people upstream and downstream. You know, we saw a lot of flooding downstream of the levy as it were. And then we saw a lot of rapid water rising, um, downstream, right? So upstream, there was a lot of flooding that happened a little bit more slowly and then very quick flooding. And we all heard the story about the Stafford. My understanding of rivers and people who study rivers all the time, that is a function, somewhat of a function of our levy now. And if we build a large capital project right next to the river, we could expect more people would want more levy, bigger levy. And then some of those impacts could be exacerbated and we would be impacting even more people up and downstream, which is a concern I have. Um, and also just because we can do it, doesn't mean we should do it. So for me, the Civic Center, um, I am not comfortable with that location. Yes, Commissioner Lyons.
Sorry to push the point. But given the feedback that we've just heard, can we kind of make some kind of decision on, on this one? So that the process is a little bit easier going forward?
Yes.
Moving it along.
I, I think four out of five of us is, and if, if, if the person who's in favor of it is comfortable with us just making a movement unannounced that we can.
Yeah, we won't make a movement. We'll just, yeah. Yeah. We're not going to do like four motions.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
But can we just like?
Yes, that's my mercy.
Move on. Yeah. You mean to the next one? Yeah.
Okay. So next one, um, this Katie Van L and Street Park. We can go on any, do you want to take turns going first or how do, would you like to, or do you want to just go again?
I'm ready.
Okay, let's do it. Thank you.
Uh, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna lean on the points that I made on the Civic Center, which is this is our opportunity to put our money where our mouth is as to how and where Livingston's going to grow. If, when I look at the map with all of the things that we've considered of where is a place for growth of the four places that were, we've looked, this is the one that, that is like, to me, the most obvious as a place for, for Livingston to grow. And I really think that there is like going to be a development response to where we put this building. And if there's going to be a positive development response, I, of all the four places, this is where I think it should, that was, it would be most responsible for that response to be. So from, from transportation, from equity and just from the, the future growth pattern of the city, this one is the, the strongest candidate for me. And I, this is the one I support the most, the, the strongest.
Commissioner Schwartz, what do you think of the site?
Um, I like the site. The only, there again, um, my concern is with the, the ground. And that's about the only concern I have. And it's tax credit eligible. This is definitely, you know, between Civic Center and this. I would choose its location specifically with regards to the growth policy and what we're trying to achieve with that. And, uh, yeah, my only concerns with the ground. Um, pollution and excavating that site. And while yes, the other thing would be future development. You know, if that river property is sold, you know, development disturbing that, that ground around the area as well, but that's a discussion for when that happens. So it shouldn't be. It's something that I'm thinking about, but it should not be relative to this. Yes. I could do this location. I yield.
Okay. Thoughts on Katie Van L Park?
Let's see, the, uh, there's one park that's even then there's another one down further.
Yeah, we're just talking about.
M Street.
M Street Park. The Katie Van L and Street Park where Bennett is over here. B Street is over there. Washington School is over here. What do you think about that one?
Thinking about both, it went like we had four locations. We're really down to one, which this one makes the most sense. It's out of the, uh, fast traffic of stuff. And, uh, you can get, you know, we have the, uh, the trash area for the city and things like that. We have an exit across the tracks. A little bit further down, but that's a different traffic flow than anything going the other way. So other locations, and I don't like the other park that's north.
No, the South River Field.
Yeah, that's, uh, that, that doesn't make sense to me at all there. So as I say, we had we dwindling downward.
Okay, what about you?
I, I like this location. I think it's a good example for all the reasons that Commissioner Lyons said. Um, I think this is a good example of a brownfield redevelopment. Um, if we were talking about putting housing in this location, I would be more concerned about people living there and sleeping there and being in that place 24 hours a day. I think a, a location where people are coming in and out um, and not sleeping there at night seems like a much better use of that, that land. Um, and a, and a good redevelopment. There is a sidewalk, not on the side of that park, but across the park. Um, across the street from the park that goes all the way. It also appears to me that you could potentially put a bike lane on the street that comes in front of it.
Yeah, it's wide enough.
Yeah. And I, and I also think that there's some really good active transportation things, um, connections that could be made that wouldn't be ungodly expensive. One meaning that the O Street connector is right there. And if we could engineer some sort of a way to get across Bennett there, I think there's some really great active transportation there. It's also close to the hospital. Um, so I think that that could be really useful. I think that it would be a really great thing for this neighborhood. And I also think that potentially you could add a playground in that area so that that community doesn't lose their playground as well. I'm, I'm not as concerned about the cinder pile. If it's asbestos, which is what the report said. It's capped, it's vegetated, and I would be much more worried trying to remove it than leaving it. Because we know with asbestos that once you start to disturb it, you're spreading it everywhere. So if it's left alone where it's at, it's capped, it's vegetated, it's fenced. That seems like, uh, something that needs to be left alone.
Like that, that, that is generally, I, I worked on a super fun site. I mean, I was employed on, we ended up.
Yeah.
The best thing to do is encapsulate it.
And leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
Yeah. And so, you know, the idea of thinking to move it or something, I think it's, is, is not a great idea. It, it needs to stay where it's at. I know DEQ has looked at that and said that that, that, that plume hasn't proceeded. But of course, it has, it has. Yeah. It has received, you know, it has received it out of that area. The most recent DEQ meeting that I went to, they were talking about contamination down into the bedrock. And that's where they're having to remitigate, which is deep down into the bedrock. And from the maps that I looked at, and I could be wrong, it was not that area. It was shifted further over. But there's always, I, I mean, I, I can't say that there's not the chance that there's contamination. Like we, we can't make that determination, obviously. And I, I would hope that before, even if we make this determination and this is the place that we are going to make sure that before we start digging that that is the, you know, a secure, a safe location, but.
Ghost walls.
And saying that, that's why I also said, I think that Washington's in this, I'm just going to bring Washington School because I think it, that's why I think Washington School has a higher, better use because that would be a great place for housing or something else. And I, and this park would potentially would not be. And so that's why I, that's, I, I have strong feelings. I really do like Katie Van L Park for this project.
Um, so now it's my turn. So, um, I would say there's a lot that I like about this site. I, there are not many amenities to this part of town. You know, in terms of like, this is a, this is a good park, right? It's not the greatest park in town, but it's a good park. And like these, these folks that live here also deserve something great. Just like people on the south side have something great. I, so I lived in a super fun site. The whole community was a super fun site. So literally lived within the super fun site. Um, I've seen some pretty positive impacts from redeveloping land that was much, much worse and more contaminated than this. So I do think that it can be done. And I think that it should be done thoughtfully and very carefully. Obviously, there's really great possibilities for this particular parcel. Um, if there's some ability to expand. I think it's, I really like the access on a major road. I like that it's near, you know, the, the utilities in town. So that's like a, a positive in terms of like long-term city cost with near major infrastructure is like a great benefit economically to taxpayers. The place where I keep getting stuck is, um, knowing that what's very near there and that that has not necessarily been remediated. And I'm not talking about the asbestos pile.
The rest of it.
Yeah. I'm talking about heavy metals and I've, you know, seeing too many, um, really tragic impacts, not only, not only, um, children being impacted and it will affect their whole life forever. Because they've been impacted by cutting heavy metals, but also, um, seeing people, um, lose their loved ones, their, their whole life ends because of what they've been exposed to. So I've seen sort of like a pretty extreme range. And also I think that these things can be That risk can be minimized, that it just has to be done very, very thoughtfully. And and it would require a built environment, so I'm going a little bit into green hat. Let me put that in English, I'm going into like generating like ideas like about like if this were the site. What conditions would need to be met for this to be a safe site for our community? Um, this site has a lot of risks for me that's different than the civic center site. Because of flood, the floodwater goes down, but once you're exposed to lead, that stays with you forever. And so, um, there would need to be some some serious conversations and some serious protections in place and addressing things before. Any sort of construction really happened, I think with this site. I think we really need to like, for me to be comfortable, I'd really have to understand the risk. Um, we'd have to get a little bit more information and then we'd have to like build it in a way that really minimized risk. For the people who use that facility, because it's not just people coming and going in the community, the staff that work there, some of the staff will be there as often as they are in their own home.
Right.
And those people also matter, and so, um. I just want to make those, and it could be that there's no risk at all, right? It could be that we get information and it turns out all of the hotspots are localized and they're somewhere else far away, or maybe they've been remediated and I just haven't read that information yet. Um, so I am like a question mark and feeling really uncertain and a little queasy thinking about risk for me, that's not worth $4 million. We're talking about people's whole lives, there's, I can't put a price tag on that.
You have a red hat there.
Did I go into red hat there? Yes, I did, thank you. I did, see I, see I have feelings. Okay, so now let's move on to the next one, that was fun. So the next one is the North Side Safford Park. Um, Mel, I mean Commissioner Freedman, sorry, it's late, started us off with that one, he said that he is not a fan of that location. Who else would like to go?
I'm not a fan of that location as well.
Do you want to add any reasons why?
Negative. Away the positives by biologists. Location so far away from everything else. Yeah, I guess that's my biggest concern.
Okay.
And sadly shaped.
I mean, I think that's important, you have a unique also background and experience that lends well to this. Thinking about set locations. Anything else you have?
No.
Okay.
For me. It is the least attractive north side location.
Okay.
I I would agree with um. My fellow commissioners, it it is my least. Least favorite or satisfied location as well, um, I just think it's too far out of the way. Yeah, it just doesn't, doesn't feel right to me.
I um, I think that this is way more desirable than the civic center for me, if those were the only two sites, I would choose this, so I do think it's competitive overall. But for the north side locations, I think it's probably the least accessible. And so I think that makes it challenging to a good, a good portion of our community. Okay, so we can take that one totally off, is that what you were going to raise your hand about, awesome, salad's off the table? Is this working for you, is your?
Oh, this is been down. At the time of your life.
I didn't need to like turn my back and pretend that you weren't a part of this, but like I know you're not a part of this part, so I just want to make sure that you're like, is this working for, you're getting everything you need, okay?
Appreciate the conversation.
Okay, so now we're onto the Washington School site. Jump on in, who wants to go first?
Do you want to kick us off?
Um, well, I'm not going to kick anybody at all. I think. For me, I see the most sort of net positives for this site if in fact the school district really wants to. Release themselves of a burden of a property that they're not able to use or they can't afford to use. I think in terms of thinking about net positives to the entire community, because I I read the enterprise too. I know that the school board is going through a period of transition, right, where they're having to really think critically about their budget and their. Their capital, what's the word I'm looking for, their capital like assets, like they're trying to really like figure it out. And so I think there's net positives for the community, if there's some sort of public exchange that can happen. Um, that benefits residents all around that pay taxes in city and pay taxes to the school, so I really like the site for this. Um, Commissioner Lyons talked about um, growth as this, this decision being potentially about like. Growth policy and where do we want to sort of promote growth in the community? Is sort of one of the values or priorities, it's highest for you, for me, but one of the priorities that I saw in the presentation tonight was accessibility. As being a primary um, interest of our community, and so for me, this is the most accessible site, so this one is my number one. Probably for that reason, and there's um, much less concern about environmental risk in a site since kids have been here for a very long time. Um, and it's it's outside of that superfund boundary. So I guess for me, it's a net positive and those are two of the reasons why. It'd be my number one. Other folks?
I intend to agree with you on this, as far as the net positives, exactly. Still, we have cost demolition. Not tax credit. Tax credits aren't available for this location, but that being. It is centrally located. And probably the least controversial, the it's the safest. All the way around from um. Economic, environmental standpoint and everything and. You know, really, and this was my first choice and I kind of went away from that and started looking at M Street, but. The product there, I I I'd be very happy with this location. I understand. Carry some concerns that it would be really beneficial for, you know, for housing and stuff like that. But it's also ideal location for a restaurant, it's also all you.
Everyone's looking at me.
You're dirt.
I see this as a favorable location. But when I pick, when I'm thinking between my top two. I think Carrie or Commissioner Kale, Vice Chair Kale, put it best. Put it best. When, when she suggested like the potential other uses for the site, I see. I see the. I see there being a high value, whether it returns to a school use, whether it is developed as residential. I see that if not, if we were not to choose this location, there's, there is a good future for this location, right? Yeah, the 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 Katie Benel Park. I don't see that obvious good future for that location if we don't put this at the the wellness center there. I think that that this location, if it doesn't get a wellness center. It's going to work itself out and and be and become an asset to our community, whether that is reverting to a school use or something else. It is, it is a, it is a valuable piece of real estate. That that in that has inherent value that will be capitalized by either this, the school district, the city or the market. One of those, one of those ways it will be capitalized. The Katie Benel Park, I think that that's much less likely. And what happens there in that not being capitalized is. Really status quo for that neighborhood. Ternis doesn't see it as a neighborhood, but I do see it as a neighborhood.
Oh, I see it as a neighborhood, I was just talking about the industrial areas. But I agree with you that that's a neighborhood.
So.
Yeah.
And and in and in not doing anything there, I expect. The market, the city, um, there isn't a school district to kind of continue more of the same, that's what's happening there.
Yeah.
And I don't think that that's a positive really for the city at all, and particularly for the residents of that part of our community. I s- I see there being a lot more to gain by the the development as a wellness center at Kate Benel. Then then there is to gain by maybe supplanting other potential other uses of the Washington School. And so for that reason, while if it happened at the Washington School, I, you know, I could walk away feeling okay. I even while that's the case, I do feel very strongly that the Cave and Al Park is a much. Um, better option because of of the the, because of it being a catalyst for change, whereas here. I think that 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 change is imminent or a positive outcome at Washington School is imminent regardless of whether or not we put it well.
Can I follow up on please? Of course, yeah, so I'm gonna. I'm gonna sort of follow you Tori and and. I think, you know, we taught, we have talked and talked and talked about infill, right? And that we need to do infill in the city and that's how we want to grow. And no one's going to do infill at Katie Mall Park. Right, that that's not going to happen there, it definitely, as Tori so eloquently put out, could happen at Washington School. You know, I think. A wellness center is a really great use of Kate Benel Park and a brownfield development. And I think that we need to, as a community, start looking at brownfield development and please. Don't think that I'm not concerned about.
Oh, I don't.
You know, the the. You know contaminants or toxins, but. I do think that we could build a cave in Al Park and do it thoughtfully. And build a building that's safe and make sure that everything's in place before we move forward with that. I would say, yes, Washington School is a fine location and and I would say that it's probably been my number two this whole, the the whole time. But I just, you know, thinking about Livingston growing. And the best use of the lands that we have, particularly when we. Say and say and say we want to do infill. Let's use the properties that we have effectively, if we have any say in it, right, or or can like help direct it. And Katie Benel Park would be great for. A wellness center. And that's where I'm at, and I, you know, and I don't know how far along we're going to get here, but. I would, my, I would question Mr. Gager about, you know, if if we moved forward with. A property that we had some concerns about, what's the backup plan, like, you know, like what, is is there an out, right? If we choose a property that we have a few concerns about and we. Get right down to it and he looks at it and says, oh, no, this, this is the big thing that you didn't want. Is is there, is there an out? So that would be my question too.
Yeah. So I think. You didn't say what you felt about the, you said Washington School site is like your number two. Okay, and Washington School site for you, you like Washington School? No, it's out. Okay, so it's like palatable, but it's not your favorites.
Yeah.
Overall, as a theme, as a, as a, as a majority, not as individual people.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, well, and.
And. Yeah.
So overall, it's.
But there again, you know, I'm kind of with Carrie to one or two, you know.
So, okay, so before we go to Mr. Gager. Yeah, I'll respond, so like I think, I still, I mean, I've seen some. I'll go back to Katie Bonnell, since we're really, it sounds like we're down to two sites that we're talking about.
I think.
A gut check thing on these two sites, so this is a little bit longer than what we talked about, but let's just do it, this is a big decision. I do think that there's. Major positive impacts from redeveloping, I've seen that. Um, firsthand in my life and I disagree with you that it will never happen. I do think it would probably take many decades longer to happen to wait for it, so I think that there is a unique opportunity for the city to help. A part of town that might otherwise be overlooked by. Less imaginative folks, right? I think that. Risk can be mitigated and there are things that there, I believe that there are things and I've seen things that are done that that can make it environment more healthy and to mitigate risk. I just think if we choose this site, we need to have a conversation about how to do it ice wide open. Um, we're not the only people in the community that are going to have concerns, it was brought up tonight, more people will have concerns. And I think this site would require some sort of special conversation that the other sites don't require. To make sure that the community also feels um, like we're addressing all the things that need to be addressed before developing the site. Because there are people that have lived here and worked on this issue more deeply than the five of us, particularly as it pertains to superfunds, so we might, there's things we might just be missing that we don't even know we're missing. And also I think those, you know, the technology exists to. To clean it up. Or we need to give the risk. So I'm I'm definitely like open to it and I think maybe now, if you guys want, now is the time we could probably. Do like some green hat and invite Mr. Gager back in. Are you all open to that at this point in terms of Katie Benel specifically, since that seems to be rising to the top overall? Are you open to that? Okay. Welcome, Mr. Gager.
Nice to see you again.
So you've been following along, do you want to share your thoughts on? You know, this stuff, yeah, on this stuff. Do you want to, do you want to share some of your thoughts on how we might um, move forward if we're considering Katie Bonnell as a way to like, address some of the unique challenges to this site? That have been brought up tonight?
Yeah, a- absolutely, so um, you know, I I will point out that it seems. Is is um, circling in on on uh, two sites that that would require um, some some work with partner agencies or entities and so. Um, you know, I I hear the um, the concerns about Katie Benel Park, they are. You know, certainly valid after, you know, having poured through the the record of decision from many years ago, so. I would be happy to uh, proceed in conversations with our possible development partners around there, the other adjacent landowners who have expressed interest in working with us. And you know, as part of that, uh, would be happy to um, order some uh, some testing of of the. The ground sites, certainly, uh, most immediately the ones that we control, um, but then as well, um, the ones that we don't control and. Um, would be happy to to report back if if there is anything um, that comes up of concern. Um, either from a testing, uh, you know, ground material testing standpoint or just a partner conversation standpoint on that site. Um, if if there's any concerns that arise there, um, would be happy to report back to you folks and. Um, and then at that point, uh, you know, we could assess the other option, um, you know, the the school mission. Uh, but I may, you know, I may have been misreading the room, but it sounded like the the Katie Benel Park was was maybe slightly more preferred over Washington. Kind of why I propose that, but. I'm I'm a little confused as to where we are. But uh. I propose kind of like a. As close as I think I can get to a consensus.
Yeah.
It that's kind of like responsive to what I'm hearing from Mr. Gager and our and our discussion, which would be. The sense I'm getting here is that it would be okay to identify Kate Benel with a big asterisk. Related to whatever we can learn about environmental quality. And then I think, I think all of us are pretty comfortable with that asterisk. Doing a if problem, Washington School is okay.
That's exactly what I'm thinking as well.
That's how I feel. That's a sense I'm getting from other commissioners. Chair Nuts, I, I recognize that your preference has been Washington School, so I'm not trying to.
Been back and forth between those two, so I, I'm, those two have been back and forth in my mind, listening to the public for the last few weeks. So I would ask me on a different day.
And I also just want to, I haven't had a chance to like acknowledge your experience and how that affects. Like reasonably affects how you, but red hat, how you feel about.
Right.
About cave and L. And I think that that's like very understandable and, you know, I, I'm thinking about transportation and. And, and I'm thinking about environmental quality and I think that's like a great, great way for us to, to come together to make a decision.
Yeah.
But I guess just to like offer a synthesis.
Yeah.
Cave and L with, with the asterisk of environmental quality and a very easy. Maybe not even requiring another convening of the commission of, of Washington School if we are not satisfied with. The, the information.
And making that as an alternate.
Yeah.
If it's. If. Katie Bunnell Park is suitable for building after testing.
Well.
You know.
I'd like to ask a question at this point.
Yeah.
That I would assume would be something you'd have to come back to us with to determine whether or not it's suitable, that you would not be making that decision on your own. Because depending who you ask, they'll say it's suitable or not outside of these five people. Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I'd say if there was any ambiguity in the results, then certainly I would report back. But if, if, you know, all the test bits came back, completely fine, no issues. I, I'd be happy to report back to you anyway.
Well, yeah.
Well, let me, let me offer then some green hat suggestions for what I would like to see in terms of data. First, I'd like to know if the potentially responsible party would be helping pay for this testing. Not taxpayers. I would like to see. I'd like to see like a testing done in some systematic way across the, across the. What is it called? Like across all the land that would be developed. So every, you should do it every, um, couple of feet. There's engineering firms that do this every couple of feet and there are several depths, usually two to three depths, they're testing the soil. I would like all common contaminants of concern to be tested, not just the ones that have been identified as contaminants of concern. Cause from what I saw, lead had not been identified as a COC. And I would want lead and other common and common contaminants of concern to be included in that testing, regardless of whether. They've been identified formally as that. Let's know if there's any TSP monitoring data available. And if in fact we find something, is the potentially responsible party willing to work with the city and help offset the cost or simply pay for. Monitoring and also remediation before we develop. Does that cover it? But. There's, I can get back to you if you need that actual number, but I think it'd be TSP. I think there's smaller ones.
I was gonna say, I know there's a number of different TSPs out there.
I think, yeah, ten might be too big for this, but that information DQ would be able to tell us the appropriate level for. For the container, the industry, this industry, TSP might, ten might be for hard rock. Okay.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion or do you feel like you have a consensus?
I, I feel like I have adequate direction forward.
And are we moving quick and I?
You're good, don't worry.
This is work timeline wise, like are we?
I, I believe it does work timeline wise, you know, quite honestly, if I, I knew coming into this evening, if it was. Either of these two sites that, that had a, a, a third party that we would work in conjunction with, that, that would be a little bit more time involved in that. And so have built that into the process. We will continue the conversations with the county moving towards the ballot. While we do this work in the background to evaluate this, this site. And, and depending on the, the findings of this evaluation, the project team will have a report back to you for further direction. Or we will then move down the previously planned path of working on the programming, finalizing the programming. Building layout, site layout in anticipation of, of, you know, more public conversations afterward.
There's one other thing I would like in this. There was data collected, a hundred and eleven data points for sampling lead. Across the superfund site and all hundred left eleven spots came up hot for lead between ten and three thousand seventy parts per million. From whatever I read, I'm going off of memory. It could be off, it's eleven fifteen. If there's a map of that data, so we can see where the bulk of the contamination occurred, that would be great information to have. And any other information like that that could be useful in assessing risk. That was a lot, but it probably already exists, a lot of this. Anything else?
Mr. Gager has any needs from us?
I believe so. So. Just to make it public. Are we voting on a?
It sounds like you guys really need to get a vote from Tori's synthesis. So.
So we're for. Katie Bunnell.
With an asterisk.
Right. And Washington School is the alternative.
Yeah.
I'm just doing this for.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
For the benefit of all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think this is great. Okay, so. Back to our agenda, we're done with that. Keep us on the loop, please, on what you find.
I absolutely will.
Uh, next on the agenda is city manager comments.
Thank you, Chair Nuts, recognizing this is the latest that we've entered the city manager comment portion of the meeting. As my time as city manager, I will thank everybody that stayed in the room and online. I appreciate your participation in this public process and look forward to further developing this project with and for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're moving into the city commissioner comments, Commissioner Lyons.
I yield given hour.
Uh, Commissioner Schwartz.
Yeah, it was a long hour. Um, knew it was coming. Well done. I, I think that's very thoughtful. And I think that. The public can be happy with. The result that, you know, your input and stuff and everybody was heard. That wanted to be heard. Thank you, I yield.
Mr. Freeman?
Is this still the same day?
Almost.
Covered a lot of territory. I like the idea of this location because there's. Oh, there's good housing in there and I think you can draw from that, which is kind of a separated from the town. So I think this is a little boost for the area. And if you have trash, you can bring it out.
I, I would like to thank Mr. Gager for all his work on this and the public process that you put in place going into this. I thought you had really wonderful comments tonight. I feel like people really felt like they'd been heard and gave them opportunities to be heard for several weeks. I feel like this is probably the, the best public process that we've had in a very long time on a large topic. So thank you for that and thank you to my fellow commissioners for this good conversation and the deliberation together. It was really wonderful. So thank you.
Um, I would. Second, what Vice Chair Kale said, this is one of the best public processes I have. Witnessed led by the executive branch. And so I think you're fully to blame for the fact that. People came in, I mean, people came in very thoughtfully tonight. They obviously felt had a lot of time to get their message across before the meeting tonight. Often what I would see in a commission meeting is people coming in feeling a lot of pressure to get the comment in at the last minute. Um, I feel like you built him a lot of time and opportunity for people to be heard. So thank you. I think it showed tonight. And I think also I want to thank you for bringing in Kat to teach us other ways to think about the work. Because I think tonight it was really successful to have another way to work through a difficult deliberation. So.
Yeah, it helps.
Yeah, please extend my or our thanks to Kat for giving us new tools and helping us grow. As people that have to make hard decisions in the community. Um, and thanks to all of you. I feel really glad to be here with you, having hard conversations and very respectful. Thoughtful, critically thinking sort of way. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
I was second it.
Motion by Schwartz and second by Kale. All of you ever say aye? They hear it. Alright, so.
This meeting is adjourned at eleven nineteen. Good night, everyone.